Okay, let's do a call of order to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Durkton?
Here.
Ms. Roscoe?
Here.
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 Ms. Towns?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here. Okay, we are gonna start with our board workshop. Uh, we're gonna talk about the mission statement, so I ask that everybody come prepared with a two-minute preparation of what and how we would like to break this up, so I'll start over here with...
That's okay, start a minute.
Okay, I'll start with Bill. Well, let's start with Gina.
All right, I'm just pulling it up. Hang on, give me two seconds.
I know, you did your homework. We all had a little homework.
All right, you're giving us two minutes, but I don't even need that much time. I vote for B.
What?
B. And thank you both, to you and to Tom, for all the time and effort you put into that. I really appreciate you guys going through that and sending that out for us.
Right, so I think, you know, we spent, I don't know, a little bit, almost an hour, and then Tom spent more, more time after that, so...
Yeah, I mean, I like B just because, to me, it speaks the most about, like, teaching and learning. And just through force of habit, like, that's always where my brain goes and what I think is the center of all that we do, or should be. Okay.
Hey, Bill?
You know, I'm, uh, I'm on B. I like B.
Like, any, any words you want to have in there and change, or anything from the words below you thought you might want to add, or is it just, B is good?
You know, um...
James said B is good, you look.
B is good. You know, my preference, just in general, you know, despite my long-winded sentences or run-on sentences, is to have, you know, something like this, maybe just a little shorter.
I agree.
A little, little shorter, and I'm probably the last person to ask, you know, for grammar and English, you know, what to take in, you know, what to add, what to take out, et cetera, but that's just a personal preference, but I'm, uh, I'm for B.
Great. Okay, we'll go the other side of the table. You wanna go, Ramona?
You betcha. So, I am also a B for these following reasons: the number of words, but even more than that, similar to, like, what Mrs. Sierra said, my favorite things in here are the word innovation, rigor, balance, and ever-changing world, right? Like, those were key for me, and I think they're important about, to what we do here. The word innovation, of course, that's what I do all day, every day in my job, so, like, that's why that especially stands out to me. But, and I do also really thank you both, too, for the work and the color coding. I love the color coding, was able to help me process it a little bit better, so I've probably coming up on, on my two minutes, so that's why I'm a B.
Okay. Mrs. Daley?
Well, everyone's making it easy for me. I had a long, gwynted explanation, but came to the same conclusion. I think B is, is very comprehensive and hits us on the what, which, to me, is the most important piece of the full mission statement, and I do look forward to getting some, you know, additional feedback from our stakeholder partners that we had engaged previously. This is probably not the final, there'll be some word smithing, 'cause there always is word smithing, but, and then to reiterate, thank you to, to Tom and Wes for really whittling it down and giving us something to, to work off of, so, thank you.
Laura, you ready?
Yeah. Wow, look at you!
You, well, Wes sent us the threatening email to be ready.
Oh, props! (laughing).
I did, I apologize. Yes, I did.
Strongly worded.
Well, Tom and I talked about, we're gonna put in this time, we want everybody to participate.
So, yeah, I pretty much, so, I took C, but then I, you know, I had C, I inserted a little phrase from A, and I swapped out the last part of the, the last sentence in C with the last sentence of B.
So, the ever-changing world?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, that's the same, so the, the thing with the last sentence, it, it just makes it shorter, 'cause the ever-changing world was in B and C.
Yeah.
And in B and C was graduates are well-equipped, too. That was in B and C, but then I just, in B, I put, be responsible and effective members of, you know, that, B just had the shorter sentence. So, B and C pretty much had very similar last sentences, and I liked the last sentence of B a little better. And the only thing I took from A, you know, I kept C, but I inserted that, that little phrase, partnership with parents, students, staff, BOE, feeder districts, and community. I just thought, um, our mission, we really do integrate with all our stakeholders, and I did like, you know, that partnership piece. And, you know, the, the innovation is in C, so, it's in the yellow there.
Okay, that's awesome. Just writing myself some notes.
I can give you my handout.
Yeah.
(laughing).
Wes, do you wanna, uh, grade it? Put, like, a...
Yeah, we'll be a frame.
Get the art students to bill, or the shop kids to bill us a frame for ya.
Okay, we'll go to Tom.
So, I'm already very happy, just because I think the, the discussion that we're, that we're already having is not only really helpful, but the reason I'm really happy is that, as a designer, when we get to this point, and I think your feedback reflects that, we strongly believe that in order to know what you should do, you have to have a couple of options that are all really strong. And so, in working on this, what struck me is that, again, it's sort of like reconfirmed how good the existing mission statement is. It's not bad at all, it's just like, right, it maybe needs a little sharpening. The middle one is probably the one that I was sort of leaning towards most as well, because it talks about, I think, the, the teaching and learning focus is probably the strongest there. And then, and this goes to Deanna's point about feedback from stakeholders, I'm really curious what the feedback might be from the community to C, because this, I just remember when, when we were running and at some point going a little bit door-to-door, the one thing that I heard over and over again is the argument about, why are we always talking about having to college? Everybody thinks they have to go to college. What else, you know, is there not some other balance, and should we, and so, the C version is basically an attempt, a specific attempt, because it introduces that language, I think, where it talks...
Lesson.
Exactly. The continued growth in college and the trades, and whether those are the right words, I don't know, but it, that was a very specific attempt to actually try to make that mission statement as sort of accessible to the, to the broad range of our community members. And so, I'd be very interested to hear, I think we should open this up to additional feedback from the community, and then see whether, whether we, whether we, you know, that influences our decision-making, but I'm very happy with B. I could also very happily live with C, and so, let's see what, what else happens.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll go, 'cause, you know, I was, I thought the one we had was, uh, number A, I think we, we word smithed that pretty good, and I thought, um, and we could, I thought there was some more stuff we could do with that as well, um, possibly moving, you know, 'cause I, I like the partnership and the, and the stakeholders, I don't know if we needed to list them all out, we shrunk them a little bit, I thought that, that was good. I did really like, you know, when we talked about, I liked that learning community from B. Uh, just go through some of my other notes here. Um, that, you know, I like the safe, orderly, well-equipped environment from A, I like that one. I thought the diverse, changing world, that, that fits our needs. And I like that, the part from our, our message on justice, where we strive for value and character as well as intellect, I like that piece, but it doesn't, I mean, it's not a showstopper for me. So, I'm kind of with, with Tom on this, you know, it, I'm just really happy we're having a good discussion, and we've done a lot of work. They're all, after, after our talk, I'm fine with A, B, or C, you know. I was good with all of them at the end of Tom and I's conversation, so...
And Wes, can I add, can I respond to something?
Yeah.
So, in option C, for instance, that first sentence came directly, Wes made some suggestions about, remember when we had that statement about, I think, social justice or whatever, and so I included that in the packet as well. So, personally, I feel that opening line is almost as, you know, like, it's not a, it's not like the vision statement or anything like that, but I find that actually really powerful, because it's also not necessarily expected. Every mission statement you read would expect, yes, it's Riverside Brookfield High School, and where there's community, and we're teaching and learning, I mean, that's all, right? There's not that much magic in it, but coming out and saying, we va, we value character as well as intellect, to me, is actually very powerful. So, that's part of the reason that I still like C a lot, to me.
Yeah.
That's why C kind of caught my attention as a framework.
I mean, this is, on here, right here, your first thing says from C.
Yeah, that's why it kind of caught my frame, you know, that first sentence kind of caught my eye. This is who we are.
Yeah.
This is what we value.
I like that, too.
I mean, I would, if, if that's the, the direction we go, I'd like to have some discussion about the use of the word intellect. Is that the right word to put there? Is it, and I was, I was making some notes, is it accomplishments, is it success? I think intellect in some ways is limiting, and I understand the, the intention here, right, when we, when we did that other statement, I just think that is worthy of having, what is the, this as well as that?
Right, right.
Getting out the, the thesaurus, perhaps?
Yeah.
Would it be better as academic? 'Cause, I mean, I think when we look at intellect, we're thinking academic, right?
Right. Or I said accomplishment, something.
Our problem is educate.
Right, and so, character as well as academic performance.
And education goes in two different ways.
Yeah.
You, I mean, as you grow up, you develop, and in high school, you develop a lot of your character, right? And it's not necessarily our job, our charter, to do that, but it certainly is part of the environment. And then, but it is our charter to educate them in an academic, intelligent way, so I think that's kind of, I, I don't disagree with you, where we're going.
Well, we still do the pillars here, yes? Do we have that?
Character counts?
Yeah.
I think Dr. Freitas is implementing, is working on something different.
Some, but similar, right?
Yeah, we were made, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think most schools now have some underlying character development curriculum that they support, so, um, that is something that goes on in most schools, K-12 these days. So, but I, I agree with you, I'm not so sure, I love that word intellect.
Yeah, I don't have, I think Laura's suggestion is good, I think we, we may wanna just think on that a little bit, I understand the intent, again, but I'm not sure it's actually academic either, it could be, you know, performance, it could be sports performance, I think there's a lot of, that's why I was toying with accomplishment, but...
So, let's go back to B, and this diverse learning community is a diverse learning community, so that, that kind of encompasses that whole partnership idea and, and grabs the stakeholder idea. Are we, are we kind of, and that's in both B and C, are we comfortable with that piece?
So, that's what I don't know, so, definitely our student body is diverse, you know, politically you have from conservative to liberal, ethologically, we have a wide range of students.
Mm-hmm. I would agree.
Academically, you know, we have ability, another wide range, we have artistic students, we have students that are technological inclined, some are more in the trades of, okay, so, when I think of diverse learning community, I think of all the ways our students manifest. I don't necessarily go to the partnership with the stakeholders. I think that is a little different than a diverse learning community, or that partnership, you know, we rely on input from parents, our feeder schools, you know, we share a math curriculum with them, we have them coming for music, we have them performing in our music performance, um, you know, we, we keep trying to reach down into those feeder schools, trying to get a parent's feedback, student feedback, I think that's a little different than a device, diverse learning community.
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, I think the question to me was, because the stakeholders, you can't go wrong with them, there's no question.
Right.
The question is, is it, is it necessary to, to specifically list them all out, or is there sort of a way to almost, you know, say it without listing them all? And of course, I mean, I have a bias in the sense of, that the diverse learning community, ideally, isn't just the students either, I mean, we're all in the paradigm of lifelong learning, and so I sort of like the idea, maybe it's idealistic, but the idea that, like, all the stakeholders are in that same bucket of learning, and we're all gonna be learning for the rest of our lives, and that's maybe a way of saying.
So, this was actually one of the, the nits I had about the color coding, is I would've argued in B that diverse learning community is really the who, right? It's a different way of describing Riverside Brookfield High School.
Yeah.
And so, I would've coded it red if I, if I was drawing out a new (laugh), but, but I think, you know, perhaps we either need to agree that we say Riverside Brookfield High School and know that that is defined by everything that was listed in the underlying mission statement, or defined in option A, or we actually list it out, like, either way, it's the who, and, and, you know, we want to show that we're casting a broad net, that we're being diverse in all of those ways that Laura mentioned, and, and all of the ways that we know exist in the community. So, I think it's, you know, one question, do you leave with the small R-B-H-S, and we, we intuitively know that's a, that's a, that means a lot, or do we list out all the partnership, which, too, I think is Wes's point, gets pretty, pretty wordy? Maybe that's a way to save some, but I'm not sure you need to say R-B-H-S is a diverse learning community, I think that might be a little bit...
No, I think that's powerful, because by saying that, we encompass the multi-levels, you know, artistic to more academic, high-performing, all, all different ways our students manifest. And I think it's very different than your stakeholders, I mean, you could just say, in partnership with stakeholders, you don't have to list all them out, but I think stakeholders are definitely different than your learning community. They're part of it, but they're different. You know, Grandma on the block is a stakeholder. She's not necessarily part of this learning community. She's learning on her own, but she's not part of this learning, we are not obligated to provide her with an education.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
The business owner is part of the stakeholder. We're not obligated to meet his educational needs.
Yeah. No, I, right, I totally get your point. I, I go back to what Gina said, because it's a school, and, like, do you just, do you need all of it, and would, would lengthen it a little bit, which, I don't, I mean, I've never had a problem with a few more words, either.
(laughing).
Just saying, but I thought Gina's point was, was quite good, in terms of, like, right, it's like, there's only so much you can say, but like, you focusing on the essence of, like, the magic that happens here, we all know that has everything to do with the teachers, has to do with the administrators, and it has to do with the students, and so, if push came to shove, I would probably lean a little more towards that group, as opposed to listing, you know, everybody else, but...
I mean, you can make the assumption that we have a partnership with our stakeholders, but I do think, saying we're a diverse learning community, anybody who was thinking of moving into the community might feel like, well, my child will fit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't know what their child is like, but they'll think, well, if they're diverse, regardless of who my child is, they'll fit. So, I, I do like that, that verbiage.
So, where are we landed on the stakeholder thing?
Well, what if, I mean, what if we, in terms of process, and I don't exactly know when that happens, or how we get, how we seek the feedback from community, from the stakeholders?
Well, that's what, that would be my question. When we're talking about, like, further input or, or next steps, what, what is, what does that look like, and what's the timeline? I think that's a bigger question than...
And what question are we asking them?
Well, I think we, we finally come up to one, because we had people come, we had a whole workshop, and then we post it, kind of like the budget, and we leave it for comment, and then we make, you know, when we open up the board meeting, we let, we articulate that, this mission statement is now on display, please make comments, and send your comments to this email, please come to the board meeting, and we invite comment that way.
I think we should be able to get, you know, between the, the conversation here, the idea would be, well, we, at seven o'clock, we'll have a good idea, Tom, you and I can work through the final piece of it, but we'll circle it around, is this good, that, you know?
Yeah.
I think we'll all be like, yeah, that's exactly what we talked about.
Yeah.
Then, then we take that and we post it for a period of time, whether that's a month, I don't, I don't know that...
Two weeks, two weeks.
It could be two weeks, it's fine, we can run it by the students and parents.
I just feel like they leave stuff up there too long, and it just gets lost.
Right. Well, it's just till the next meeting, right?
Sure, which is two weeks.
Which will be, hopefully, four weeks in this case.
And I would suggest, I'll make a Google form in the domain, and then that way Mike and Connors can put it up on the, along with it on the website, and they, we can have a Google form, and that way, all of the, there's not 25 million emails, and all the data gets collected in one spreadsheet, and you can disaggregate the data based on pivot tables anywhere you want.
The, uh, the next board meeting is April 13th.
Okay.
So, you won't have your final, you're gonna post your final draft at the April 13th meeting, Wes and Tom are using it.
I think we should be able to go to the board.
Finalizing it today.
I think we could finalize one today, I mean, get close to it, don't you think?
Yeah, and I'm not married to the stakeholder group, but I mean, I don't...
Yeah, no, I just think, I'm willing to say, to Wes, Wes, I think Wes said it well, right?
Yeah.
Let's come up with, let's finish everyone kind of weighing in on some of the nitpicky words, right?
Right.
And then put something out there, and we're not adopting it, the board still has to adopt it following feedback.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we'll kick it around, and I think between email, we can, we can, because I think Tom will have a good idea, and Tom and I can say, this is what we think the board's vision is, we'll send it out, and Gina will say she doesn't like, I spelled this word wrong, and this word, and then we can, then go back around with that, but I think that's a good spot. That's why I was kind of like, where, where, where do we end on this stakeholder thing? Where, where are we landing on that? Are we, are we saying it's a stakeholder? Is the word stakeholder the word, or are we going into the list?
I, I think we just say Riverside Brookfield High School, and then we know that, that includes stakeholders.
Well, I'm, I'm...
I'm okay with that.
Shorter, better for me, I'm, I'm into Riverside Brookfield High School, as opposed to, and stakeholder.
Well, the stakeholders only kind of came up in version C, 'cause it, it said, we're diverse, oh, I guess I, where was it in there that...
No, I stuck it in there.
It was in A. Oh, I'm sorry, it was in A.
Yeah, it's in A.
Where it talks about partnership, so it was only, but the B that seemed to be favorable doesn't mention the partnership. And maybe the partnership can come out later, as you talk about your strategic plan, how we get there, we're gonna partner with our stakeholders.
Right, right, 'cause that would be there.
Or I would even suggest that they could try to get it into that somewhere, start the second sentence with this partnership, I mean, play around with it, it may be a way to...
Yeah.
Or do you wanna say a diverse learning partnership? Is that a community?
No. I think a diverse learning community is different than a diverse partnership. A diverse learning community describes your student body. I mean, I think you could use your partnership and your strategic plan, probably, 'cause you could talk about, we're gonna achieve the strategic plan through partnership with our stakeholders.
Yeah, I hear ya.
You could probably pull that in later.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Lily.
Hi.
I really do like this list that you guys came up with here, the academic, artistic, health and wellness, we live together, I think that's a nice...
Yeah, I do, too. I mean, that's a, I know other schools frame it in those terms, you know.
Let me drop the word aesthetic, which is always just...
So, I don't think anybody has any issues with that piece of it, right?
No, so, kind of, now that you're talking about where I have the C framework and little B, but, I mean, I do like the B, but I do like that first opening of C, I don't know, somehow you could, like Tom said, that...
Yeah, I, I don't...
This is who we are, that first sentence, it's kind of powerful.
The character as well as intellect, we're just gonna work, we're gonna verbiage the word intellect, right? And then we'll go on to...
Well, then after that first sentence...
The diverse learning community...
We are a diverse learning community.
Right, and then we go on to the, and then we're kind of skipping ahead to the provide academic, artistic, and health, wellness-related growth, right? That framework. And each student, graduates are well-equipped, do we like this kind of ending?
Yeah, I like the last sentence of B.
And then it's like, for past to continue to grow, or be responsible for effective members of ever-changing world. I kind of like B in that statement, so...
What are your thoughts on that?
Now, we're kind of getting to the final bit.
There's a sentence in C that I did like, that sense, and to conduct themselves to an integrity and civility. Yeah.
I like that piece, too.
I mean, there were some nice things in C, I mean, I really thought...
No, I, I worked hard, I liked that.
(laughing).
Well, so, so can I circle back real quick?
Yeah.
If we ask for stakeholder feedback, do we just propose pre-final, right? I mean, we're close, but we say like, okay, this is it, or do we pose two to solicit a more, a better conversation from community members back?
I would suggest one.
Dave, top one, top one door open.
I, I, I think it's our job to get this wrapped up, right, in the one, and then say, do you like, and then...
Because I think we also wanna show the current, and then proposed, right?
Yeah, sure.
And if you like...
Yeah, then if it's three, then, yeah, it gets, sure.
I mean, we, we all agree on who the who is, right? Just how much you, how many words you put behind the who, right? We, we agree on the, um, the elements, it's, it's kind of a bringing them together, so I think that B and C combo.
Yep.
And I, I would imagine that the survey should just be very, what do you like about it, what would you suggest, maybe, or what would you... Suggest, yeah. Or is there, and then maybe third question, is there something, how do you say, that you don't like, or that bothers you, or something?
Something you find wholly offensive?
Yeah, I don't know how to say that.
And doing...
It's here.
Or, or is there something superfluous, or would you, is something missing?
Oh, that's good, is there something missing?
Because I think the way we ask the question is really important, if you just say like, please comment, I mean, you'll, you'll get.
No, for sure. Yeah. If something's missing is a good one, yeah.
Yeah, is something missing is a good one, yeah.
Okay, now my finishing statement, be responsible and effective members of an ever-changing world is B. And then path to continued growth in college and the trades and a responsible citizen. See how it's a little bit different in C?
So my concern about the college and trades is that it then, that that doesn't talk about the military, like, it's, it's a little bit limiting, right? There's a lot of things people could do.
It's kind of talkative to me, I kind of like B better than finishing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you, you have to, I don't think you can be specific, if you're going to talk about it, you have to say like, well, that's why B is better, because it just says like productive members of, that doesn't say productive, but right, but like responsible.
Whatever you choose to do.
Right, whatever you choose to do. Otherwise, you have to say like post-secondary opportunities or something if you want to name it.
Yep, I agree. Michael?
So I just read through them. I think that my, the best one that I like is probably A. I also like B because they both are, I think, pretty similar, I think that they get to the point. And they also, they're not, they're not too general, but you get the idea when it's like intellectual, vocational, civic, and social skills, or in this one, academic, artistic, and health and wellness of each student. So I think both of them are pretty good, but I would, if we were to have to choose one right now, like probably going towards A, I think that one has a lot more. It targets a lot of different viewpoints, different aspects, so I think I'd go for A if we were to choose that.
Okay. Lilly, what's your thoughts?
I haven't read the.
Yeah, I think we caught them a little bit by surprise.
Yeah, I know, that's what you get for coming early.
The beauty is, we don't have to make a choice.
I'll take a look and let you know.
All right.
Give me a minute.
So, but I think in our conversation, we came up with some good, one, two, three, four, five sentence structures, that's what I'm counting down, and we'll kind of get around and get, we can get something out of that pretty quick.
Yeah, I like that all of them were cut down to the similar amount of words, so you can more focus on what was in the contents, sort of how many words there were, so I like them.
Looked good, see, we didn't think we could do that in 45 minutes.
No, thank you guys for getting us here.
It's the colors.
We were worried about.
We were worried. I was like, all right, we got to keep this thing going.
I was ready to really nitpick some of those colors, so.
I knew you were.
Hi.
Where's the future?
I guess we get, we get a break here.
Okay.
Five-minute bathroom break, that's the back for seven o'clock, showtime.
Thanks, we had a nice workshop on mission statements, thanks you for everybody for participating, being involved with your recognition.
I think most of them are on the hall.
I was going to say, are they coming in? I don't think so.
Ramona, are you reading?
Am I doing a student recognition?
Yes.
Okay, let's get started then.
No, Beth, Beth, those are the, those are the students being recognized.
I know, I couldn't hear anything.
We're on, we're on the recognition, so you might want to give them a heads up that, have the coach come in, and we'll ask for the girls in one at a time, yeah, right?
Do you want me to do dance first then?
Dance team?
No, I'm starting with speech.
Okay, I got it, and I got all my notes too.
Dr. Freitas, here's your certificate, if you want to come up.
I just say speech state series for student recognition. An RB student competed at the IHSA speech state series virtually on February 19th and 20th, 2021, in the humorous interpretation category. In this event, one student performs an eight-minute memorized interpretation of a published humorous play. The student performs the entire scene, playing all of the characters. Wow. This RB student placed fourth at regionals and third at sectionals. Congratulations to Paris Salenica.
Paris, congratulations.
That's awesome. What, what did you choose as your play?
Oh, I did HI and I did Squaddle by Don Zalys.
Okay.
Outstanding, congratulations.
Congratulations. Athletics. The competitive dance team has maintained a positive and hopeful outlook on their season, considering the roadblocks that they have faced since November. This strong group of girls created a supportive, respectful environment for each other, which has provided this relatively young team with a number of successes throughout their short season. The conference championship and state qualification proved their dedication and perseverance during an unclear season to pay off and pave the way for their future. The girls finished in the top 10 of the state finals against 29 other teams with eighth place overall. Congratulations to head coach Madeline Dahl.
She's here. Madeline, you can also use the center space, as we call girls up to social distance a little bit.
Okay.
Okay?
Volunteer assistant coach Tia Sherman. Choreographer Katent Nickum. Ellie Christensen.
Ellie.
Annabella Cornolo. Catherine Glave. Olivia Glave.
That's whole square.
Just watch the cords, everybody. May Jamison. Marqueta McColdick. Caroline Marrero. Okay, this one, Elena Myers, Mears. Neve Norrismith, Norrisith, sorry. Ella Proto. Sarah Wallfelt. Anita Zoffi.
Okay, girls, why don't you turn to the board a little bit, we want to thank you for your great season, and like, like it said in the write-up.
The board's all around you.
You can spread out a little bit. Congratulations, we know, we know, I know even seeing some of you in the hallway, can we have dance? Are we going to have dance, are we not going to have? So we really appreciate your patience and your perseverance to achieve, you know, a place in the top 10 at state. That's outstanding job. And Coach Tia, Coach Madeline, outstanding job by you guys too, to deal with all the adversity and social guidelines that we had to follow, and so that's an excellent reflection on your leadership as well.
Thank you.
Do you have any words you want to address, or anything you want to say?
Yeah, same thing, reiterate just the hard work and commitment you guys have had since August, right? Staying together, staying as a group, and staying supportive of each other, even though we didn't really know what was going to happen. I think that shows in your finish this year, so you should be really proud of yourselves.
That's right, that's right.
So next year with no pandemic, we expect the top three finish. Just kidding, girls, congratulations. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Congratulations, girls.
Thank you very much for coming.
And I didn't say, but it was the first time they won conference, correct? In school history, first time.
Wow! Awesome, my job, there are also good ones in injury though.
Congrats, Coach, congrats.
Wow, that's so fun.
Wish we had enough of that, because it broke out.
Right, because, yeah, we should have, well, we didn't. All right, it's going to COVID-19 transition.
So, never a dull moment in the school COVID business, so today, additional guidance was sent out from the IDPH. If you look at the chart that Mary Anne has up, as you can see, our numbers are continuing to trend in the right direction. We are now in minimal under the color map in regards to, we're suburban Cook County transition, we moved from moderate to minimal. We still are moderate in regards to weekly suburban case rate at 86, but then everything else is in minimal, including our local area positivity rate. Our local area case rate is still in moderate, but again, our numbers reflect that it's safe to be open, safe to have our current model in place. Dr. Freitas will talk a little bit about the fourth quarter learning plan. Just wanted to provide a few updates. Vaccination, so we had 84 total staff members get vaccinated through pillars. The first 50 are getting their second shot this week, the second 34 will be getting their shot right or, right in the middle of the week of spring break, just kind of how the timing worked out. So technically, someone's considered fully vaccinated after, two weeks after their second shot, so we should have, those 85 staff members that went through pillars should be considered fully vaccinated by about mid-April. Kristen has some additional data in regards to other vaccines, the total staff numbers vaccinated or percentage vaccinated?
85% of our staff members have received at least their first dose. As Dr. Skinkas said, you know, a majority of the staff will be vaccinated, fully vaccinated by the second week of April.
In regards to the new IDPH guidance, I will touch on that after Dr. Freitas goes into the fourth quarter plan, and some of the points he wanted to talk to in regards to our COVID transition. But Dr. Freitas, why don't you go over your information, please?
Good evening, board members, parents, and students. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Skinkas and Dr. Smastana for always making the vaccinations, you know, opportunities available to all the staff members. They reminded us day in and day out, and provided many avenues for us to get vaccinated. So thank you, Dr. Smastana, thank you, Dr. Skinkas, and thank you for our staff members who have gone and, and received their shot, you know, 85% is a high number, and we believe, you know, by the time, you know, maybe in a month or so, we should be, you know, at 100%. All right, guys, fourth quarter is right around the corner. As the survey is closed, parents are asked to email my administrative assistant, Tammy Molo, if they have any questions or concerns about their learning option. Guys, our plan for fourth quarter was to keep their learning conditions and practice in place while strategically and safely expanding in-person learning opportunities. And our, and our data indicated that we were able to implement the four-day in-person option. If you guys want to scroll down to the next page, so I can show you guys the data. So as of March 3rd, 781 families chose fully remote, 294 chose the two-day, 494 chose the four days, and about 150 had no response, that's less than 100 now.
Mary Anne, can you move the thing so the data can be seen, it's on the bottom, there you go.
So as you guys notice, you know, our job is to provide learning opportunities to students. We know that remote learning has worked for many families, as indicated by the data. However, you guys see there that our families and students want more in-person days, and I'm glad that in a week, we'll be able to provide more in-person learning days. For the fully remote learners, okay, you need to make sure you log in every day on Zoom or Google Meets. Guys, please consider turning on your cameras, they haven't mandated it, okay, for equity concerns. However, it can, it does make a special connection between the student and the staff members. So to all the parents and all the students, guys, please turn on your camera if you're comfortable to do so. Students and families, please check your emails frequently and consistently, use the virtual office hours, and if anybody needs any help, your teachers, counselor, admin, we are here for you. For those students coming in for the two days, guys, we'll continue with the same model, okay? Make sure that you come on your days assigned, A through K, Tuesdays and Thursdays, if your last name begins with A through K, and if your last name begins with L through Z, okay, Wednesdays and Fridays. Guys, remember, when you come in person, okay, you must complete the Raptor check form. And guys, please arrive on time, because, you know, we've noticed sometimes there's a line, guys, we have to be on time. And if for some reason you're not feeling well, guys, please stay home. For those students coming in for four days for in-person learning, make sure prior to coming in, okay, you complete the Raptor form. Because I have my son in school, and I received a call from my son's principal. I've forgotten, so parents, please remind yourself. It's funny when a principal gets a call from another principal, okay? I've gotten that, I'm a human being, okay? But guys, please make sure you complete the Raptor form, it's very important. Guys, arrive on time, please make sure you bring your IDs. Also, if one of your classes is over capacity, you will go to the library possibly for a period on your non-alpha days, okay? You need your ID, bring your headphones, and you will use Zoom or Google Meets, okay? And if you're not well, again, please stay home. Parents, students, and the community, I've been communicating with you, I sent an email Friday. We'll be sending messages this evening, tomorrow, and the following days for fourth quarter. Remember, fourth quarter begins on Monday, March 15th, that is virtual for everybody, we're keeping the same schedule. And then Tuesday through Friday begins our in-person learning opportunities. To address the achievement gap caused by COVID-19, the global, and the global pandemic, and just the history of providing more opportunities to those that need it, we've created English and Math interventions to best support our students during the school day. Guys, moreover, I want to thank our staff for teaching our students invaluable skills during this pandemic, because there has been many gains. Students have learned how to use digital tools to write better, to read better, and to collaborate better. So I do want to thank all my staff for teaching our students how to learn in this digital environment and improve their skills. Currently, we're implementing targeted interventions for third quarter, such as permitting junior education students with Ds and As to the YAP, the next support to attend school daily, and next week, you know, that won't even be an issue, because they'll probably be able to come for those four days. Attendance, we've been averaging about 200 students daily, but we anticipate a lot more come fourth quarter in a week. Guys, we continue to facilitate vaccination opportunities for all the staff members. Again, thank you to the district office. Lunches, Grammy Gold lunches are still available, okay? Students can pick them up by the main entrance at dismissal. Athletics, we're currently streaming athletic contests live on two platforms. Any events on the main gym, you will go to the NFHSnetwork.com, and any events in the east gym, in the field, or in the pool, okay, go to RBTV Live. Currently, right now, I'll count, currently we're allowing 50 fans, up to 50 fans in our main gym. However, in the other facilities, we're currently not allowing fans. For outdoor sports, more details will come out shortly. And lastly, RB, we are currently, we're working on prom and graduation and Apollo Awards. There will be a prom, it may look a little different than we used to, but we will have a prom. We will have a graduation, we'll do a little more than a drive, than a drive-through. I know people appreciate it, and I want to thank my staff that did an outstanding job in making it happen. But we will be doing, you know, a unique graduation, you know, ceremony.
In person.
In person, in person at our stadium, and of course, we're working also on the Apollo Awards. And Dr. Skinkas, that concludes my COVID-19 transition plan update.
Okay, so today, at 11:32, we got an email from the State Board of Education with revised guidelines in regards to opening schools and operating schools. I think some of the revisions in the guidelines will allow us to definitely implement Dr. Freitas's plan for the fourth quarter, where students can come for four days a week. Some of the significant changes were the six foot has been reduced to three feet, as long as people are, the mandatory mask is in place, and the schools are also doing the five mitigating factors, which are masks, regular cleaning, encouraging hand washing, social distancing, and having a contact tracing platform in place. We have all those. The three feet to six feet will help the current model of doing the 50%, because that should hopefully avoid having to use any of those blended rooms or any of those overflow rooms when we have students that are coming two days as well as four days, if there's a particular class. Now that we can go with desks three feet apart instead of six feet apart, that should help to avoid that. Even with the three-foot requirement, we would still need to do 50%. We're not at a phase, we're not in Phase 5 yet, where we could have 100% on campus at one time, because you still have to do the three-foot minimum social distancing. However, there were some things that were included, just some quick fix things that I think will help the school move, continue to move forward. You know, in third quarter, we got the 50% model in place. The fourth quarter, we're going four days for the almost 500 kids that requested four days. You know, 794 roughly with between four and two days. In-person graduation will be able to occur. Outdoor venues will be limited to 20%, but, you know, we think that we could pull off an in-person graduation with allowing only two spectators per graduate. As Dr. Freitas mentioned, there will be an in-person prom. It will be outdoors somewhere by the stadium with some tents and some things that him and his administration are planning. But that is allowed and is at the school's discretion, as long as you can still, you know, have the mask mandate and have ability to social distance, you can have some of those events now. We're still not at a point to where we can do lunches. So we will be continuing to stick with the same schedule for now, which is the 8 to 12:35 schedule with the remote on Mondays, with 781 students selecting to stay remote. It's obvious that some of our families are still, don't feel that they're at a point where they want to be coming in. But we're going to need to start transitioning those families to it. So I thought, to being able to come in person. And there's a part that I talked about in the revised public guidance, and I'm assuming there'll be more guidance on this. But as we shift towards next year and through the summer, the remote option is going to become very limited. As vaccinations become regularly available, I would expect that the remote option will be for anybody only with a significant medical condition, which would be documented either through a 504 or documents through your medical provider. So the families that have elected remote fourth quarter, at this point, we're not looking to pull that away from you, but you need to start preparing and being ready to transition back to a traditional school year and a traditional school setting. Because based on these guidelines, I do think in August, we should be able to implement our traditional schedule. Beth has, Ms. Augustine will be speaking shortly with Ms. Lindquist. We have five lunch periods now in place. We used to have three. We have five built into the master schedule now. And so next year, when we come back with those five lunch periods, if we're still under the guidance that they're offering in here, they removed the 50-person guidance from the cafeteria model, but it has to still be six feet, all facing one way. So there's still some things that, some hurdles we'll be encompassing. But we think with the summer, we should be able to plan through how we can do those five lunch periods, even if we have to use two venues like the main gym and the cafeteria. So we'll be working on that this summer, so that we can pick up in August with our traditional schedule and hopefully be going 8 to 3 like a normal school year. I think that's all I wanted to cover right now. Really, the biggest thing in there was the three-foot to six-foot and the elimination of the 50% to the indoor facilities during school hours only. So it did say sporting events still need to, and activities still need to follow the recreational guidance that's under IDPH's guidance. And that's indoor facilities are limited to 50 spectators, not participants, 50 spectators. Outside venues are 20%. So that provides a little more of an update. So that will allow us to have our marching band at the football games. We'll be doing a ticket system to allow parents and some visiting spectators that come to some of our outdoor events. I don't think we'll have any problem with capacity at soccer and lacrosse and some of those events. So we're beginning to start to see the transition back to some normalcy. So it's good news. You know, again, it's something that, we start fourth quarter Monday. So, you know, as we continue to pick through these things and look at our current safety plans and what the revised guidelines say, if there's things that we can improve on, we'll obviously work with the building administration to continue to try and improve on some of those things. But that's the update right now from IDPH has released this afternoon.
Kevin, can I ask, are we still going to continue with our checking of symptoms at the door? Because wasn't that part of it as well?
So they did remove the temperature checks. We will still do the Raptor check. And I would imagine probably for our first week or so, we'll ease through this, right? So we'll slowly start the phase out, the temperature screens.
Nice.
I'm just thinking with higher numbers in the building, right, like just the ease of that process? But they did get rid of that recommendation.
Yes, we did see that, but we also don't want to be like, oh, you know, people show up for work tomorrow. Because I do think there's some assurance from parents that selected the four-day option and two-day option for the safety measures we have put in place. The one-way hallways, or the one-way stairwells and the line going down the hallways and the things that we've been doing that to make it a safer environment. So we want to ease into some of these things as we continue to work through it. And you're also seeing, you know, some schools are experiencing, you know, now that sports have kind of picked back up, there are some high schools in our conference and in the surrounding areas that had to quarantine whole teams already, you know, because of some minor cases still coming out. So we're not completely, it's not gone, but we're moving in a better direction.
Well, the guidance from the state is all good news, right? They're lessening the mitigation factors, which is...
I would use a different term.
Not mitigation.
The five mitigation steps are like the requirements. They're not lessening any mitigation steps. They're just, they're lessening the three, six-foot to three-foot and some of the capacity limitations they had put on academic areas like the school cafeteria and athletic venues and some things like that.
Yeah, they're revising like some of the recommendations.
Yeah, adjusting very specific stuff. So I have a question on the two-days versus four-days, right? So we did the survey, and we have approximately 300 saying two-days and approximately 500 saying four-days. One, would we have capacity to do everyone four-days? And I guess I'm trying to understand what the impact is going to be by having this sort of optional two-days a week, right? So we'll have some students who will be here two-days, some being four-days. That's got to be a burden on teachers, I'm imagining, to not know who's going to be in the building any given day. So we asked for some feedback from people, but now we have, you know, the fully remote option, and I respect that for the fourth quarter choice. But two-days versus four-days, like how is that actually going to work? And can we encourage the two-day people to become four-day people?
So the origins of the two-day, you know, was brought up, you know, from, you know, parents, students, and staff, right? You know, when we went into two-days in the second quarter, you know, it was working then. You know, and now, as we kind of began expanding our opportunities, you know, there are people, families, that have revolved their lives around the two-days. You know, it's worked for them. They're engaging. So we wanted to keep that, you know, the option for the equity piece. Our teachers are going to have seating charts every period and every day. So they'll be able to track who's present and who's not. You know, so they're going to look, they're going to look at their list, Tuesdays, right, excuse me, Tuesdays and Thursdays, you're going to have the A through K students, Wednesdays and Fridays, L through Z. So it is still orderly, as teachers, you know, will know who's in the building base, you know, on the process that we have.
That's why we had them commit, so teachers know who's going to be where.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions, Ms. Lindquist?
No.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I'm excited about four-day. We've been working diligently at this. I appreciate all the work your team's put in. Hector, I know it's been a mathematically collision of proportions, right, the algorithm, you might call it, but thank you. And I know there's 500 kids that are very excited about it. It's going to be really great. And we'll get, and we'll keep moving forward, right?
That's right.
I'm glad that they relaxed at lunch.
Let's move to FOIA.
We had a total of three FOIAs. The information is attached. ABC information related to student attendance. Jennifer Smith from Chicago Children's Records that show incidents that include referral to law enforcement. And then previous school years, and then product analysis team from public contractors. And the responses that we provided are attached.
Is there no other questions on that? We'll talk about staffing report.
So Kylie Lindquist, Assistant Principal Curriculum Instruction, and Beth Augustine, Assistant Principal for Student Services, are here tonight. They actually have a couple of reports, so I'm just going to keep them up there all at the same time. They can go through their three reports with Dr. Freitas, and then they can touch on the items to be addressed.
Hi, everybody. Hello.
Hi.
Good to see you all.
Hello.
All right. So we are going to start with the staffing summary. And let me get my notes and myself together here. So what you see in Board Book is the typical staffing summary that we do each year. This summary is the result of this year, what was 10 rounds of sectioning and staffing that Beth and I did with the instructional coaches reviewing course requests from students. And when you look at this summary, the first table shows in the FTE 2021 column, the FTE for this current school year. And then next to it, it shows the FTE for next school year and the change in FTE up or down, depending on what changes we made from one year to the next. Our goal this year was to get our total FTE to 103, based on the enrollment projections that Dr. Smatana provided in the fall. One note that I made on this document that isn't typically there is the note of current FTE underneath the total. We're currently physically staffed at 104.6, because we had a resignation in the first semester, and that teacher happened to also be a literacy coach, who had some release periods in her schedule. So when she resigned early, we filled her teaching position. But we did not have, the person who filled that teaching position is not a literacy coach, so we did not fill those two release periods. So that's why I made that additional note there. There was a question in, on this document about whether or not specifically in the World Language section, that 7.2 number accounted for the German teacher that we had resigned just prior to this school year, and it does not. So that 7.2 represents all of the physical sections of World Language being taught in our building right now. Were that German teacher still in that number? She taught .6 in World Language, so that number would have been 7.8, were she still with us this year. So when we go through this process each year, the thing that Beth and I keep at the front of our minds and what drives this entire process is the student choice. For sections given in any particular area, it's driven by the number of students who request a particular section. For example, this year, we saw, right away, the first thing we saw was a spike in our applied arts classes. Our classes like Foods, Game Design and Animation, our Autos courses. We saw a spike in those courses considerably this year. And that's the first thing that we noticed. That's why when you look at a department like Applied Arts, you're going to see that the change in that direction was positive, rather than losing FTE particularly there, because that's where our student choice was filtering. We also noticed a spike in our visual arts courses this year, in our requests for drawing and painting, for ceramics, for photos. And so while it looks like Fine Arts is down, we actually saw a growth in our visual arts area. And one of the reasons that we knew right away what happened in Fine Arts is the graduation requirement for next year has been changed, so that students no longer have to take Fine Arts Survey. To give you an idea of what that kind of means in the grand scheme of what we do, Fine Arts Survey accounts for .8 FTE. So Fine Arts Survey, to pull that course off, involves four teachers having a period of that in their day. So for example, this current school year, where it was a graduation requirement, we had 256 students slated to take that course. That's happening right now. For next year, when that requirement was removed, we had eight student requests for that course. So what you saw is a very large population of students branching out into other areas and electing to choose a different course, because they weren't tied to that Fine Arts Survey option.
That course still exists in the course catalog, even though it's not a graduation requirement?
Yes, yes. We didn't remove it in the event that for some reason...
It wasn't canceled?
Fine Arts Survey, no.
Right.
The graduation requirement, however, was removed.
Right.
Yes, but it's still on our books. We had eight students. In that first round, we had eight students requested.
So when the counselors were talking with students about graduation requirements for pre-registration meetings, they were pointing out that that was no longer a graduation requirement.
Sure, sure.
So another thing in that kind of first summary table on that document that you'll see is that required FTE section underneath the department sections. And if you're zeroing in on that section, you are going to see some additional changes that we made, working to get us toward that total target FTE. So specifically, some of those changes, we reduced our instructional technology coordinating by .2 and our literacy coaching by .4. So we pulled away from those areas, so that we were still meeting the needs of our students, getting into the classes that they needed or requested to take, but still staying at our target number. One area, though, that in that required FTE that you'll see was an increase is in our Algebra Academic Support section, where you'll see a .2 has been added there, so that's a .4. I've been working on an intervention structure for next year that I could get into, and I'd be happy to tell you about it anytime you'd like. But basically, what I wanted to do, we've typically traditionally had literacy coaching, and that's been a variety of working with teachers and working with kids. What we know to be true now is that next year, more than ever, all of our efforts have to be focused on our students and what they need and what those gaps might be. So what we wanted to do, and I've worked with the school psychologist on this, is create a more definitive sort of MTSS instructional intervention structure. So next year, I'm going to have mirrored support in pull-outs and push-ins in English and in math. So I will have a .4 in each area to be able to address freshmen and to be able to address sophomores on a very intense level. I don't remember even when it was approved, but a year or so ago, the board graciously approved STAR assessments for me. And next year, we will have them at the freshman and the sophomore level. So we have now the school psychology, the school psychologist Pushbalwin Bush, award-winning psychologist for a reason. She and I are working on a structure of regular progress monitoring, dispatch and intervention. Progress monitoring, dispatch intervention. So that's where kind of those intervention pieces shook out.
Nice. So that just means they're going to get, like, they're going to give some assessments and then use the data to inform the instruction and give very targeted, you know, target the kids that need it with, you know, only because from the primary, but right, like, they need work on short A. We're going to do short A.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, you know, just trying to give them a layman's...
Yes, yes, solving equations. I have a person who can go and find you in your study hall, right, in a class that's not your academic core and really work on those skills.
But if a kid doesn't have a study hall, where would we pull them from?
We would pull them probably first from PE if they didn't have a study hall. And then, then it might get trickier, and we might need to work on something else, because we don't want to pull students away from their academic core or from the things that they love doing, sure. So with the kind of the intervention mindset, there was a question also that was submitted on this report about what the best options might be to lower class sizes at the freshman level, because, again, we're talking about gaps. We're talking about kiddos who haven't been in school for a while. And so that's kind of something we thought about going into the sectioning process. And our instructional coaches are phenomenal, especially in those areas, those core areas where we really do have to look at, we are going to need some interventions. What are we going to do? So we staffed already, we sectioned for an average class size at the English 9 level of 21.7, so that we can keep those class sizes low, so that we have the ability to work with those students. The average size of a freshman algebra class next year is sitting at 20.5 right now. Now, that one will grow, because we've worked with Lindsay Minaw. We have the Extended Algebra course, and some of those kiddos are going to come out of Extended Algebra and push themselves into algebra with some support. So that 20.5 will not be the average number. That's just where we have it now. So we have some room to get those kiddos in, out of the extended, and still be able to move forward. And we were, you know, we tried to be intentional with the class sizes in English and math. At the sophomore level as well, English 10 class sizes are at 23.8. Average geometry class size, which is the 10th grade general level math, is 23.1. You know, sometimes it's, in a way, robbing Peter to pay Paul a little bit. You're going to see maybe some higher class sizes in some AP courses or some honors level courses. You know, I did, I taught for a long time, and I taught all levels. And I know that the smaller class sizes, when I was working with students, worked best with the students that needed the most support. And so that's kind of a decision that we make to make sure... to make sure that our most needy students get our most support. And then the other tables on that summary sheet provide you with some summary information about current and past class size averages. We broke it down a few different ways so that you could see it once the 40-to-1 classes, your PE classes, your music classes are pulled out. You can see the average size of the intervention classes at the bottom. And I listed some of those things that we consider, those intervention classes.
Intervention classes are at 17. Do we feel that's a good number?
Great.
True. I think you want to ask them that.
Yeah, we have, right now, I was just looking at the reading numbers. We have 34 kids total that are scheduled to be in our reading program. We have three sections of reading, two of them are co-taught. So we're trying to be very intentional about the amount of time that we get in those interventions and the ability of those interventions to work. Again, like I said, you know, there's some shifting around that happens to make that happen, but we're feeling comfortable with where our intervention classes are.
Two sections of 34 are averaging about 11 kids in our reading classes.
Well, the reading, you know, typically, we have Tier 3 and we have Tier 2. So you might have maybe that Tier 3 class, which is our most struggling learner, might be a little bit smaller than those Tier 2 classes are because the needs are more significant in that Tier 3 class. But yeah, we have that, we have that.
And how many of those are co-taught, which there's a special ed teacher in our regular?
Of the reading?
Yeah.
The reading, there's two of the three. So the most at risk, the Tier 3, and one of the Tier 2s will be co-taught. And then kind of your highest flyers in that other Tier 2 will just be with our reading teacher.
Historically, many of our transfer students need interventions. So our freshmen that are out registered...
Those numbers could grow.
Right, so there's plenty of space, right.
And what about math? I know that's a question that's come up a lot through the board. I know you said our freshman algebra classes. About the freshman algebra intervention or what's that, Extended Algebra?
So we have, Extended Algebra is what we call our Algebra Black. So it's a class where the students are in the class for 75 minutes, rather than just the normal class period. I'm looking, I brought all of my numbers right now because I want to make sure that I have it. The Algebra Black, again, is, this is a little high. We have two sections of it, and there's 48 kids. So it looks like we have classes of 24. But like I said, Lindsay is going through MAP scores, and Lindsay is going through specific schedules of those students that are in the Black, talking to their teachers to see who can be pushed into that algebra class and maybe be able to do it on their own a little more because that frees up some time in their schedule, too. So if we can get them to be able to function in a regular algebra class, we want to do that.
Are those classes co-taught?
The Black, yes. There is, both sections of the Black are co-taught, yes.
And then using Algebra-Academic Support possibly?
Right, right. So the Algebra-Academic Support has been really successful. The kids really gravitate toward it. It's been a pullout system for us, where Ms. Sherman, who was acknowledged tonight, goes in and gets those kiddos out of their academic support class, and they sit and they work on math. So she's reinforcing the skills that they're doing in freshman algebra. And so next year, we're really excited that we're going to add to that, and we're going to have a dedicated math person who's going to go get kiddos and reinforce geometry. Because we've talked about this before at the board level, that sophomore year is the breakdown year all across the board, and kids struggle in geometry. And when they do, they really struggle. So we're really excited about being able to put that very structured intervention system in place with the help of Pushba and the folks that are going to be doing that. We're really excited to be kind of in front of what we want to do for next year. So that's all about the summary page.
Vacancies, I mean, it's just an FYI for the board, but we're basically, it just shows the language the board previously approved in the contract in regards to retirements. As you can see, we're replacing four retirees with newer teacher. So that will help with some of the financial difficulties the district may be experiencing over the next two years. But that was just an FYI for the board. Beth, this is the part that you need board approval on, so usually touch on this next part?
So just a quick question before we go on, I think just for the record. What's the estimated enrollment next year compared to this year? I know we've had this previously, but could you just refresh him?
We edited it to the report. So this year, we were projected to be at 1683. We actually came in at 1660, and on campus is 1629. So just so the board understands, even though like with our projection being at 1683 and the actual being 1660, if you think about it, those 23, 25 kids, each of them took five classes, that's roughly one teacher. So us being off by about 25 students in our, just in our projection is at least, you know, showing that we probably had one FTE more than what our enrollment projected, projections were. And we built in room for transfers and some of that discrepancy in our enrollment projections. So even for next year, we're going from 1660, we're projecting 1648, which will only have roughly 1620 on campus. So you'll see again another drop of roughly 12 to 15 students. And that's if we hit the 1648 number. If it comes in below that, that's why you'll see the small drop-off in the number of FTE.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have, you said the test scores, are those from the feeder schools? Do we have the test scores?
Yeah, I actually just got the last one today, their winter MAP scores. And that's, you know, it's not my favorite data to go off of. It's not, you know, it's not the best. It hasn't been easy for the feeder schools to even administer those tests. I mean, you know, we got, they were gracious, and they gave us the ones that they did in the beginning of the year. So the fact that we've gotten two scores from all of our feeder schools is phenomenal. Thank you to our feeder schools so much. But we just got those today. So they've given the Fall MAP and the Winter MAP. And that's the data that we've really had to do our placements off of because we weren't able to give a full-scale PSAT.
How's that look in comparison to the years past?
You know, it's hard to tell with MAP because it's not the greatest predictor to me. And year over year, it really is apples and oranges. There's a lot of students that didn't take the test. You know, when Ryan from SC Gross emailed me today, he said, you know, you're not going to see scores for a lot of kids because normally what we do with MAP is, you know, when we give MAP, if you're not there on the day that you get MAP, you get hunted down. And you're coming in, and you're going to resource, and you're taking MAP. And there were problems with the computer system. So this year, the feeders did the best they could and said, we're going to give the MAP test, but there wasn't the option of having a million days to give it or get every kid. So I don't think it would be a fair comparison, really, to say necessarily they look better or worse. What I can see from the requests and the courses that students have filtered into is that we have not seen an explosion of our intervention courses. So we're not seeing a need for five reading classes instead of three or two or three pre-algebra classes instead of one. Our sections of our courses for students who have lower-end test scores are the same as they have been in past years. We haven't had to increase that. So that, to me, is probably the closest indicator that I can give you that we are able to maintain what is traditionally an intervention course number for us, based on the kids that we're getting.
Historically, we would give the PSAT.
Yes.
And that was our primary filter. Second level of data was MAP data, and then third was teacher recommendation.
Yes.
So now with the eliminating of the state assessment because of the COVID, not being able to use that, we had, we're using MAP data for what they can provide.
And we relied very heavily as well on our partnership with the feeder schools, and the teachers had very open and honest conversations with our teachers and recommended students based on their experience with the students. So that was kind of the other thing that helped us there because they had some context to give us outside of that one snapshot that we were trying to use.
Tell me if this is correct. The elementary does MAP because it aligns with the tests, the other summative tests that they give. But MAP doesn't necessarily align to the summative tests we give at this level, correct?
Yes.
So that's why it's also sort of a, there's some hard, like, science to it, and there's some art to it, right? Like, there's some of that massaging those numbers and kind of a brain assault kind of a thing.
To fully understand them, yeah.
Right.
I wanted to ask a question that you said about the sophomores and the geometry, and how that can be difficult. And typically, a freshman has a year of in-school social and mental, get used to the environment, right? And I don't know if they've had that this year. Maybe 200 of them have, 400. Do we think that's, so we almost have like two freshman classes, right?
It's like school readiness or high school.
What's that, daughter?
Sure, that executive functioning and all those kind of plain school things.
Look at that. It's like you just, so recently, we just started working with Rush again because they, I don't know how long it was that Rush was here that did the executive functioning curriculum.
Patrick was like a freshman or a sophomore. He's 25 now.
Right, so it's been a while. I mean, since I've been here in the last six years, we've hired close to 25 teachers. So we're working with Rush right now. The teachers, there's an EF team in our building that's comprised of one of our literacy coaches, some special education teachers, school psychologists, some teachers in other areas who have really been dedicated to bringing EF back. Kathy Wesenski, Sandy Gagan, executive functioning. So we're working with Rush to hopefully get Rush into our building in some capacity. And if I can twist Dr. Skinkus' arm to give me some time to train teachers this year, because I want to be able to send teachers away knowing, here's how we're going to roll next year. This is what this is going to look like. We need to bring back the anchor. Kids need to be anchored in what they're doing. They need to see common things. They need to walk into a classroom and see an agenda and see learning. Those things that have always been good practices in teaching and learning, we need a booster shot of. So we're, I have an email right now from Kate at Rush, who, you know, we're going to train groups of 50 at a time. They're going to do virtual training for us. They're going to honor the training that we were going to do at the end of last year when we all went into lockdown. So that's one of the ways that we're trying to be proactive with regaining some of those student skills because we'll have students that haven't been in any school building in a year and a half.
And the Student Services team, the plan is to hopefully have some summer curriculum hours, social workers and psychs to come up with a game plan for August when we have hopefully all of our students back in the building to do some push-in. Currently, they are pushing into freshman PE. So they're administering SEL lessons to our freshmen once a week. I think the PE teachers are enjoying them having this push-in, and hopefully they will be open to continue having Student Services provide some supports through that class and being creative in other ways that we can connect with students without pulling them out of their core classes. We definitely will be taking some surveys to kind of see what the general needs of our students are. Also partnering with our feeder schools, which we do every spring, to get some feedback on students, sometimes individual and just sometimes general needs that they're seeing to ensure transition. Dave Mann and I talked, it's been a while, but maybe having a sort of extracurricular fare or activities so that the freshmen who really weren't able to participate in future Bulldog Night, and it was Zoom, not the same as actually hearing about it in person, doing that at some point as we roll into the next school year so that they know what's available to them. So as many things as we can to try and get kids reconnected to the building and feeling academically supported as well as emotionally and socially supported.
Would sophomores have any?
Yes, yes. When I said the surveys, yes. So those are, probably run some more groups, you know, or whether it's some grief groups, just some general support groups, the anxiety of coming back into the building. Jim Franco has really taken off with mindfulness, offering that more regularly for students. And just see what the needs are. It's hard to plan unless you have data to support what that plan looks like. So rather than just kind of throwing things out there and seeing what kids actually gravitate towards, actually doing some surveys and getting the pulse and what students, what they need and what they want and what they think will be most valuable.
I think it'd be interesting to look at the freshmen this year, who are or who will be remote all year.
Yes.
So those are kiddos who haven't stepped foot in a building since February of eighth grade.
Yes.
And they may be targeting those kiddos. Thank you.
Definitely.
Beth, do you want to cover your portion of the staffing report? I know that you have some information.
Yeah, so the sectioning data, the report, there are three classes under 20 that will need board approval. Two of them are intervention classes, the sophomore reading and the pre-algebra. So you would want to see those numbers low. And then the AP Spanish Literature is part of our ELL program. And again, not surprising that those are low numbers. Then the next set of courses are classes that are offered one time during the day. They are singletons. They are over the 20, but they are not at the cap. And then the other set of numbers are classes that are currently over the cap, but students will naturally conflict out and will have them assigned to a different class. And that's actually a pretty, a pretty short list. We made a very conscious effort, rather than for kids to conflict out of what they wanted was to actively look at what their second choice was and have the schedule built with their second choice as opposed to something where they might potentially not get in.
About half of last year.
I'm sorry?
That's about half the courses for last year.
Yeah, I know. It was a lot of work, but it was best for students. And I think they landed where, they'll land in a course, like, you know, freshmen, for example, they didn't get their first choice well. At least we were able to put them in their alternative course.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions on the staffing report? Because we do need to take board action on the three classes under 20. I think that's later in the agenda, correct?
Yeah, minimum course enrollment approval. I don't know where it falls on the agenda.
It's under New Business.
New Business, yeah.
Okay. So Kylie, you're also on the agenda for a textbook report. Do you want to just?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
I don't know what we have to, Marian, do you know what page textbook report is on? First of?
If we, 237?
37. Okay, Kylie.
Okay. So what I have provided is a three-year textbook adoption plan, but I also included our current school year, just kind of a review, mainly because there were a couple of changes that took place that I wanted to be able to share. So again, this report shows first the overview of what we projected and spent for this current school year. There were a couple of purchases there that were unplanned, that we had not projected for, one of which was the purchase of our AP Music Theory textbooks because we had gone through the textbook process already when we realized that we were going to have enough students for that course to run. And then we also had an unexpected expense in driver's education because of the pandemic. We looked to offer a virtual session of driver's education but needed to provide those students with a resource so that we could get those students through the class. So that's why you'll see no projected costs for those two. Another significant change to the expenditures for this year was the fact that we decided to forego the purchase of, en masse, of AP Physics textbooks. We happen to have a physics teacher who can write his own code, who uses resources to then create through something called WebWorks that I don't fully understand, materials that is even more relevant based on what he was able to get from the samples. So we talked, and he said, I can make what I'm going to use for the kids. We don't need to buy all these books.
In a science class, it's a double-edged sword because you want a resource. But many times, by the time the book is published, that is out of date.
Right. And when Mark does something with WebWorks, he can tweak it because he's, you know, he's right in the actual... Do you have Mr. Shadell?
We had him, I had Mr. Weiss last year, but we did WebWork as well.
Yes.
And I really liked it.
Yes, so that's why we ended up not going with that AP text that we had originally been planning to go with. When you look at the rest of that first page, year one of the three-year plan, that represents the textbooks that we are asking for to be purchased in July, once the new fiscal year hits, for next school year. And as you can see, we're asking for resources for AP Chemistry, for our Auto 1 and Advanced Auto class, that's the same book, but different classes that it serves, our Honors English 10 course and our Health course. There was a question about whether these resources were licenses or textbooks, and I tried to indicate that. So when you look at AP Chemistry, I put textbook in parentheses because that's different than, for example, the Auto where we're getting a license and textbook bundle. The interesting thing here, you know, when I first came to RB, we were newly into the one-to-one initiative, and we wanted everything to be an online book. We wanted it to be online. We wanted it to be online book and we wanted it to be interactive, and that was where we wanted to go. And so we went down that, down that path in some of our courses and we found some interesting things along the way. Like, when you buy licenses to a textbook, you are paying significantly more money and you have to keep re-upping them. Whatever arbitrary year the publisher decides, we're going to give you these licenses for three years. So then you end up spending additional monies, um, over a period of time that you may not, we may not have needed a new resource in three years of a particular text. So it's really course-dependent and we've tried to, um, allow some autonomy within the specific courses with regard to what that looks like. An AP Chemistry book is an AP Chemistry book. It's a book. It's very expensive. You know, it's one of those things that you need the resource. That was another question, you know, what is the lifespan of a book as that? College Board actually says that the lifespan of a textbook for an AP class is 10 years. So with the fact that we were using our AP Chemistry book for 17, we needed to get a new resource going there. So, you know, for something like Autos, it made sense for David to request a license because that's something that you can do on the computer and you can be working and have something right there. It's not, it's not paper. So I, I'm, I am not pushing the way that I had before that this needs to be an online textbook. Another reason is we're finding out computer literacy in terms of reading a textbook online is a whole other thing for kids to learn how to do, um, to interact with the textbook, to figure out what that, you know, how that functions. And sometimes, what I have found for some of our learners specifically, that can be a barrier to accessing the material. And so we really want that to be a decision that we allow courses to naturally make instead of forcing kids, just because we have the, the Chromebooks, to say, "It has to be a book, um, that's online." I am a, I am a person who, who understands that very well because I'm not going to read something off a computer. I'm always going to print it and have it in front of me. So that's why I tried to make the delineation, um, there about whether or not it was a textbook or a license. So there, again, there were additional questions. Uh, the AP Chemistry book, again, the life of that book is, should be a 10-year, uh, process. Another question was...
A quick question back, actually, on the AP Chemistry. That estimate number, I wasn't quite following. That is the estimated enrollment in AP Chemistry in any given year? So you need 40 of those textbooks?
Yes, so we have, for example, right now, I believe we have 38 students that are, I have it right here.
We've got a classroom set or we've got, is it?
So because they could be running, um, into, they could in theory run in different periods if someone different taught them, or because we want the students to potentially be able to take the resource home. In this case, since it was so few to be able to give each student a resource, and because AP Chemistry, if I'm being honest, is a really, really challenging course that kids might want to take a book and be able to, to work on it at home, we went with being able to give one to each student.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. So we want, we don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we're ever short and having to scramble at the last minute. Um, we, sometimes they get damaged, things of that nature. Um, there was a question also about the Honors 10, um, book, um, asking if this was a new book for students. English 10 has typically been a course ever since I got here and, uh, well before, um, that has relied on supplemental readings. You know, I, I'm a perverser that understands that as a, a former high school English teacher. But the English department wanted to go in a direction of supporting the growth of a student toward AP, and so they wanted to go with a pre-AP textbook to anchor that a little bit more in the skills and the foundational knowledge that you need to be able to prepare yourself for AP Language and then AP Literature. So this is a new, uh, request for them. And then there was also a question about, um, the cost of the previous Health book. That significantly predates me. I believe it was a decade old. I don't, I don't know how much that was. I looked for it, um, and I can tell you how much that Health book, that 10-year-old Health book is now if I wanted to buy it on Amazon, but I, I don't know what it was initially. I do know that, um, the Health textbook in comparison to kind of the other textbooks that we're looking at, especially the AP Chemistry book is, um, and that's a fairly low cost for a hardback cover, um, resource there. The fluctuations on, on something like what I'm requesting for next year, sometimes can come in shipping costs, sometimes can come in additional discounts, um, but typically, we're not over, um, we're not over that amount.
So year one is kind of worst-case scenario.
Yes.
Year two and three, you're just laying out right now for the board of things you know for sure.
And there was a question, um, about historic, um, spending and budgeting for textbooks. So I just went through and pulled all of the requests that I have personally done. So that dates back to the request for the 1617 school year. So in 1617, we were looking at a $38,000 request, I'm rounding. Uh, in 1718, we looked at a $59,000 request. In 1819, we looked at a $79,000 request. 1920 was a rough year because we re-upped our Carnegie Math Curriculum five-year agreement. So 1920 was 144,000. And then that brings us to this year and we're looking at $43,000 and some change. So in the, in the span of the last six years, it's a relatively, uh, low request. If you kind of average that out, um, we're looking at kind of a six-year average of $60,000 around there, um, what we're typically looking at in textbooks.
I would say that you want to start focusing on year two and three.
Yes.
So the board understands the history of giving you this report is so that we know kind of three years out as we were doing these budgets, especially back in, you know, if we start to relive some of the deficit stuff that we had to go through after the 2008 recession, this just gives the board an idea of where dollars, what, you know, necessary academic resources need to be purchased.
And the, the year two and three of plan, you know, those, again, are, are estimates at this point. I made a note under AP Statistics, that will be a decision, a purchasing decision that would be dictated by College Board. They're in the process of figuring out if they're going to, um, make some changes that would require a new text. Um, so that is something we would be, um, kind of pausing on, uh, to see where they guide us. And then, uh, AP World History and AP Human Geography are courses that Dr. Freitas would like to begin running. So we would need to, if we're able to run those courses, we would need to get resources for that. So I put them on here so we weren't in a position like we were with AP Music Theory. So I could foresee, right, if we're able to get this course to run with enough interested students, we would be looking at needing to, to have that resource connected to the course.
So that's, that was my question on AP Music Theory. Obviously, it ran this year. It would theoretically run in year two. We would not need to repurchase or be surprised by any cost for that class because now we have them.
Correct, yes, yep. And I would anticipate, you know, if we're using the 10-year as a mark, I would anticipate us being okay for, for quite a while on that.
Okay, I don't think there were any other questions submitted on textbooks. Beth, you want to just touch on the trades and all the progress you've made? I mean, that was something that the board discussed in early February and we've made some significant progress. And so if you could just bring the board up to speed on that while you're here.
Sure, absolutely. Um, so I want to thank, um, Mr. Durkin and Mr. Smithing for being involved in this. Mr. Durkin has really made some great connections for us. I actually had to keep a spreadsheet because they were coming in pretty quickly and I wanted to ensure that we were, um, making the connections quickly. As of right now, we have spoken with all of the contacts with the exception of one, and we are meeting with him tomorrow. The counselors and I have had the opportunity, and everyone's been great, like so excited, very, um, helpful and very interested in working with RB students and, and trying to build a partnership. And what I think is really great is now we have a personal contact. Now we have someone, if a student is interested, they have a question, we have a name with a face, they know who we are, and they're very gracious in saying, "Yes, give us a call." So we have, um, created this, a, a website. I want to say thank you to David Weischer, who provided us with some of the information, uh, Marian, if you want to click to the, um, the website. Um, and Melissa Carey, who has put it all together, uh, on our Student Services homepage that's then linked to College and Career. And actually, Melissa just added another video from me yesterday, uh, through Lydon, had a really nice video, and they were gracious enough to loan us their script and their slides. And we, uh, rather than recreating the wheel, Melissa just sort of tweaked it so that it was relevant to RB students. And then College and Career, if you click there, and then the Union Trades, there it is. So, um, Melissa added the video at the top is new, and then just a couple of other videos that were found online, um, relative to the trades. And then if you scroll down, uh, all of the people that we have been in contact with, with some information regarding requirements, um, actually the website where they can go directly for more information. So our plan is to show this website when we're meeting with freshmen, sophomores, juniors during their group guidance lessons, which are at minimum twice a year, one in the spring, one in the fall and one in the spring. And then, um, we'll start in the fall with a Trades Expo. Everybody was on board with that. With COVID right now, it's a little hard to get people in the building. And quite honestly, I think our students are just zoomed out by the end of the day. And I really wanted to have this, like, be successful. I didn't want to have these men give up their time and then not have students show up. But I really think if we offer a Trades Expo in, in the fall for our seniors, when we have students that are learning more about the four-year college process, the two-year college process, we'll offer this as another option. And then find interest, and then we will organize some field trips for students to actually go to the sites and see the school in person based on interest from the Trade Expo. And then, starting next year for College and Career Week, we will offer, um, a Trades Expo for freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors if they're still undecided. And then that will just be a consistent, um, uh, you know, staple in our programming is to have this happen twice a year with focusing on the seniors in, in the fall. And then, um, one of the questions was, you know, like, do the counselors need any additional training? I, I think they're, they're sharing so much information in these individual meetings that we're learning so much more about the trades and it's very interesting. But what I think might be helpful is if we are able to take a, a group of students and if we needed to get a bus, if that's something that the district would support, if students are not able to, you know, cover the cost of the bus on their own, it'd be nice to go to a couple of different places, just go to one place, do a lunch, go to another place so that we can really expose them to what's, what's out there. And, and the counselors are actually really excited about this. It's a, it's a kind of a new adventure.
Yeah, and nothing is very far. Like, one of the places is just right here on Longdale and Ogden.
Yes, yeah.
Right, like, they're ve- like Lyons, very close, right? Probably the most you'd have to drive is like 20 miles.
And they're very used to going into schools and going to, uh, like, career fairs. And a lot of them have their own setup where the kids can tinker around with things and, you know, kind of test their, their interest that way.
Thanks, Beth, for everything, all your help and, um, you know, I took a pause. There's probably about 10 more that we're going to be putting on, uh, on board there with you. Um, I'm meeting with the Plumbers Union. They're really excited. Plumbers local 130.
Great.
Meeting with them on Thursday. Uh, so, you know, I'll be making that introduction.
Okay.
And, uh, also want to, you know, just say thanks to Rich Pulpis, you know, for making an introduction and John Gardner, community member, who made an introduction, uh, you know, to a couple of these organizations.
Yes, we met with the Elevator Union yesterday, as a matter of fact.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we already met with him. Yeah, we just have to get it on the website.
Yeah, and everyone I've talked to, you know, from these different trades are really excited. Um, you know, they, they say not enough high schools are doing this, which was, I guess it was good to hear, but it was also, you know, wish more schools would do this because there's, there is a huge demand for skilled trades. And I think there's a great opportunity, uh, for men and women, you know, from RB in this community to, to go into a trade. And, uh, another organization that I'm, uh, trying to get into, just so we can make the connection and introductions, the Chicago Women in Trades. And so, um, they give you a different viewpoint, um, you know, that the trades are just not all male-dominated. And so, uh, we can provide, you know, some opportunity and support for, for our, uh, female students, you know, who might be interested in the trade. Um, you know, it's, it's good for everybody.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, and I just wanted to thank Bill again. Thank you, Beth, and all the team. And, and to all the coordinators, I've spoken to a few, and it's been special to learn. And I think Bob from the Irons Worker, he was an iron worker, his father, his grandfather. I mean, they built the city of Chicago. So it was beautiful to hear their stories and how they're willing to work, you know, with our students so they could build their own legacy. So I want to thank all the coordinators and all the directors, you know. It's been special talking to them and hearing their stories.
And before I leave, can I just touch on testing really?
Yes, that'd be great.
So, um, you know, everyone's excited to hear about testing. So it, it looks like we still will be administering the SAT to our juniors on April 13th and 14th. It's two days. We are mandated through the College Board for two days because of our accommodated testers. They need the two days. They only, um, they take half the test on day one, half the test on day two. So that's the 13th and the 14th, and I'm so grateful because our juniors need an SAT for college. And if we didn't administer, if we weren't offering it, uh, through the state, we were going to have to figure out, uh, Plan B. And then, uh, we will be testing the, our sophomores with the PSAT 10 on the following week, on the 19th, and then the freshmen on the 20th. So that's going to be a good opportunity to get some data on those students, our current freshmen and sophomores, and do some little analysis of that. And then that can sort of help drive some of Kylie's interventions before we even start the school year because we'll have that data back in the summer.
We just need to make sure, Dr. Freitas, we over-communicate maybe now that those kids are going to be expected to come in. So if there's a lot of kids that are remote, we're still going to expect them to come in for the PSAT and the SAT.
Yes.
So we'll be asynchronous on those days?
We have to be asynchronous on those days because we need as many teachers as possible for the administration of regular-time testing and the students with accommodations.
Two of those days, are, are any of those days a Monday or are they not Mondays?
Yes.
Yes.
The, the sophomores will take it on a Monday.
Okay.
Yes, so there will be...
So there's four days of asynchronous in, in April?
Yes, and unfortunately, there's really no, there's no way around it. But I think we will, I think if we look at it, it's an opportunity to collect some good data on our students. It's a, it's a valuable, um, use of our time.
Yes.
I think you covered all the questions that were submitted. Is there anything else from the board?
No, I, I think that's, that's exciting, Beth. I'm just really excited about, about the whole trade thing. Just great choices for students. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good job, ladies.
Thank you. Everyone have a good rest of your night.
Mr. Baldes. They were short and concise. You're ready, you're ready to go. But Dr. Freitas, want to introduce Kevin Baldes?
Yes, I would like to introduce our new director of Special Education, Mr. Kevin Baldes.
I wasn't expecting applause. So I've got eight slides to share with everybody tonight. Really want to go into, uh, some data, some explanations, some, uh, just kind of do a little narrative about where we're at currently, some past trends, some, uh, some current things that we're working on for the school year and then for the future for next year and moving forward. Uh, so the, the chart that you have in front of you is just a breakdown of, of our special education population right now by disability area. Uh, not much of a change from last year. The only increased area that we've had, uh, percentage-wise is in the emotional disability category, which is up about, uh, 5% from last year. The two little areas that aren't, uh, very distinguishable is, are our vision in hearing students that qualify for special ed services within those two areas. And there are just one of those kids each, so it's a small percentage, but still a very important part of our department.
Is the yellow other health, are those 504s?
No, 504s are not included in this number. Nope. Other health impairment is more like OHI, uh, students with ADHD. I mean, there's a widespread of ones that would fall underneath that category.
Gotcha.
Uh, for, for, um, you serving special ed services. There is a, you know, overall, I said like a 5% increase in the ED population. I did do a breakdown chart of, of the racial breakdown into our department, but I think it's very important to acknowledge that within our, uh, currently, uh, 200 and, uh, is it, uh, two, 228 kids, uh, we have in special ed, that 47% of those are Caucasian or white, 37% Hispanic, 11%... kids we have in special ed, that 47% of those are Caucasian or white, 37% Hispanic, 11% African-American, about 3.5% multiracist, and just almost 1% in Asian. So I think it's something to also take account within our population in the special education department. If you wanna go to the next page? Thanks. Lot of numbers, a lot of things up there that I wanna kinda go through and point out a little bit. One of the trends that sticks out to me when you look at these numbers is the growth of our special education numbers in population is, is in, in consistent with, not consistent with the growth of our population of enrollment here at RB. Our enrollment is, you know, for the last four or five years, about 1.5% growth. Where in the special education department, it was about 16.9% growth. I, I equate some of that growth of, of that percentage of our population due to being special ed for, you know, in this area for about 22 years, is within the last four or five years, we've seen a significant increase in students with social-emotional concerns, hospitalizations, a lot of diagnosis with anxiety, depression, which has then transitioned over to some kids with some, some truancy issues of school refusal. Typically in our, in special ed, when those students are identified, they go through a process in our building, usually through counselors or staff members and deans, where they all get involved in recommending those kids to case study evaluations through small teams or sit. And they get to be where we then recommend them for services due to a domain hearing or, or evaluation process. Those are trends that are consistent in the United States and in the state of Illinois right now. Those numbers are just increasing as, just not because of COVID. This year's more, more significant increase. I mean, one of the numbers that I had previously, we are currently in the middle of about six case study evaluations in, in our special, in special education department that are, many of them are due to those SCL, the social-emotional concerns of, of just struggling of, of, and Miss Lingus says, so, so zoomed out. They're not around people. And some of our kids that, they need those one-on-one interactions and, and get recommended for special education services. One of the other things that stick out to me is, is our transition program. 10 years ago, it really wasn't in existence. I talked to Ronnie Carey and, what's the hammer, our two transition coordinators. And, and within those courses, they've continued to see a rise in, one child fight was a big part of this, that we had kids that are identified at an earlier age and that when they were ready to hopefully graduate on a four-year path, just wasn't something that was gonna lead them to, towards future success. Ideally, in special ed, an IEP is meant to set students up for transition after high school. And, and for some, that is after four years. For some, that's when, the day before they turn 22 years of age. And that's really, not just, you know, an individual decision, but individual team decision that really drives those numbers. And in transition, we see kids that are in there for one year, two years, and some that are again in there till their 22nd, the day before their 22nd birthday. But getting them job training, getting them out in the, in the community, connecting them with different avenues for success based on their individual needs post-high school. The bottom one, one of the things that this year, due to COVID and the lack of numbers of kids in our department that were in session, that the, the pair numbers, we had two pairs that retired last year. And though they were not replaced due to, one of them was a one-on-one aid with a student that left, so that, that direct connection wasn't needed. But it dropped for a, just a priest and the needs. If, I think if we had a full-on school year, that number would have been higher. We would have looked to hire some more pairs in those classes. But moving forward, I think that number's going to, I definitely know that number's gonna go up next year because we have some incoming eighth graders that have required one-to-one aids in their IP's. And I'll talk about that a little bit more, like, program-specific needs. So I see, I envision a like a 2.5 increase in, in pairs for next year for those two students that need one-to-ones and one-four, kids that need support in other classes during their school day. Any questions I had so far? There's a lot of numbers.
Yeah. Kevin, just make sure you touch on the questions I forwarded to you.
Yep.
Otherwise, just stick to your presentation, you're fine.
Okay.
So you're on the revenues page now?
Uh, actually, one more thing about the outplacement students. I got a question about the outplacement students, I wanna address that a little bit. There was a question about, you know, we've seen a significant rise in the number of students that are outplaced in, for multiple different reasons and the question of why. I think it relates back to the identification of kids and, and that growth of those numbers overall. I think it's also an increasing significance of, like, profound challenges that some, many of them are having in, in their lives. Some of the kids that are being hospitalized, that just are having school anxiety, that just are not able to manage themselves in a traditional school setting for multiple different reasons. Moving forward, we do have, by the end of this course of this school year, we will have nine students that will be graduating, exiting, or aging out in our outplacement. So that nine, there'll be nine dropping off of that total number. Anticipating next year, additional four students that are outplaced coming from our feeder schools, one residential and three that actually will be going to LRB, which I'll just talk about in a little bit. Can talk about that program that we have with LT and LANSI. In our residential, within those numbers, we have five residential outplace students at the end of this school year. That number drops by two, and then we have one student that will be residentially placed currently and, and will stay in that, that placement coming here as a freshman next year. So yes, the next page, please. So revenues, not really much to say about that. It's, you know, it's the money coming in that we, we have to help support our students in, in special ed. You know, it's pretty consistent. It's usually the one I don't get really many questions about, the money coming in, it's the money that's going out. I'll get questions on the next page, so. Don't expect that. So we can go to the next page if you'd like, please. Thank you. So, on expenditures, you know, with the increase of students in special ed, that's obviously going to drive the cost of special education up. As student, more and more students are identified and requiring special ed services, those services are, 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 go to cost quite a bit because they're outside the normal access that they have to their, an average student would have to their education in, in the high school setting here at RB. Outplacement students are, because of that larger number that we saw on the previous slide, have increased. Those are, are significant financial investments in those kids to put them in an outplacement school. I, I think of them as investments in their, in their future. So I would say it's, it is quite expensive, but it is, it's an investment in their, their opportunities to be successful and, and meet their needs that we've identified through the evaluation process.
So the net cost is the 6.1, and then when you offset that from the revenue that you showed on the previous page, the other 4.8 is what basically comes out of our ed fund, correct, Chris?
Correct.
So do we have a readily available, like, per pupil cost? I mean, and does the report card include a per pupil cost?
Outplacement are just our...
Of the full special ed program?
Per pupil cost is something around $14,485, something of that, in that range. It's in the handbook.
Okay.
So the, the expense, is any of that reimbursed to us through the state or is that all from what we provide to our programs?
The revenue page, right?
The revenue page on the previous page shows we get about $290 in reimbursement.
And the reimbursement is always a year behind. And so if costs go up one year, the following year, the reimbursement will, will go up a little bit as well. But most of the special education revenue comes from reimbursement either at the state or the federal level.
So this is, about 18% of our budget is, no, it's about 1/5th of our budget, right, is special ed, if our overall budget, if I'm looking at that correctly?
If you look at total expenditure, it's $6 million. Our overall budget's roughly 26, Krista?
Yes.
So close to 25%.
25% of our...
A bit over 25%.
Okay, so about 25% of our entire school budget that is earmarked or dedicated for special ed. And that, that's probably up, right? I'd say it's probably increased...
It's pretty consistent with 2020. If you look at, there's a 10-year. You saw the significant increase in 19 and 18. 18 and 19, you saw a significant increase from previous year. 2013, you're at 2.8. So I mean, over the last eight years, you've seen a significant increase.
Almost $3 million.
Yeah, so that's just a commitment that school districts make to their community that I don't know that everybody realizes, you know, the tremendous...
Well, I don't know if it's a commitment, I mean, it's a legal obligation.
Well, and it's an investment.
Yeah, it's, right, it's an investment.
Here's what I thought is, what's it gonna do in the next four, is it going up $1 million every four years? Or a million and a half dollars? Is it gonna, is this the cost of, the lease or is it gonna be a million more dollars in four more years just because it costs more money? Like textbooks cost more money, right?
Well, we have...
Transportation and all these things.
Right. We have to educate the children within our borders, right? If they live in 208, no matter, right? We have to give them a fair and equitable education. And so if they come from somewhere else or from the feeders with an IEP, we have to educate them. I would say generally speaking, and, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, but the trend is to get away from giving IEPs and more IEPs in the elementary. I mean, obviously, you want to meet every kid's needs, but I think trying to do some MTSS and other interventions in order to do that before giving an IEP has become much more common, correct?
Yes, that's very common practice that you try to see what interventions you can embed into the student's day that will help them be successful and see if those things work before you would go to, like I mentioned before, you would go to a case study evaluation for specialized service because of that reason. It's such an investment and it's, it's costly to a school district, right? I think that's the balance of, of being financially responsible, but yet using the funds to a level of that you're going to, that the students need in order to meet their needs. That, and personally, that's what I would say, that's where you draw that balance between what are the resources we can provide for a student that's going to meet the needs that have been determined by that case study evaluation. And that's that balance that, you know, this year, to be honest with some of the students that we have coming in from our eighth grade feeder schools, is like, like, like Kylie mentioned earlier, is one of my things that I've been talking about is I have a lot of kids that are coming, have not been in a traditional classroom, haven't had really real implemented IEP services and related services for a year and a half. So we've kinda really looked at, you know, not, not give them a full buffet of, of services, but, okay, we might wanna little add a little bit here, you know, really look at what is gonna be necessary to bring them and maybe close those gaps. And I think, you know, I'll touch on it later a little bit too, is why was it so important to have those, some of those kids in that, some of that population be with us to make sure that we could get those, those skills and those supports embedded into their, their day as opposed to staying home?
So, so you had said we're probably gonna need another 2 and 2.5 FTE, but...
Oh, so paraprofessional.
Paraprofessional, yes.
Okay. But I was like, I didn't say that.
That's a little different.
No, that was, that's just paraprofessional.
It's, it's not free, right? I mean, we pay those people. I hope we do. They, they know they're doing a good job, so.
Kevin, one of the things you talked about on your next page, I know I think this is your last page, preparing for the last page, LRB Academy, and I think on the 2122 you had talked about, I know you're looking to try to bring back a, a program, is it life skills?
Yeah, so life skills was a program that we had all day long here at RB. And a lot of those are for kids with multiple disabilities that aren't just going to access the, the general population or, or curriculum. Those numbers dipped a little bit, so that program went away. I'm seeing an uptick in those numbers coming in. We have two young people coming in next year that are gonna need some access to that program. Our freshman class this year had three or four kids that could benefit from that type of program. And bringing them, bringing that kind of program back, it's not a, a full five or six-period day, a life skills program, but there's like two, two of those life skills classes embedded with some vocational skill classes as well. And then some of those kids will access some of the core classes that they've been doing this year. The reason for that is that those could have been two potential kids that we'd have to be outplaced. And to be honest, I like, I want our kids to be in our building. I mean, it's, it's that connection to our community. Some of these kids are traveling far, far distance on buses to do their daily schooling. So when we get an opportunity to transition a student back to RB, that's a priority for me and I think for the families. And that's part of why the LRB Academy was created with LANSI and LANSI Township. We have, again, with our numbers going up and with our kids with emotional disabilities and struggling with the social-emotional component, is they develop the school, I guess the three entities developed LRB Academy in our community in Lowryge Park. Those kids are not traveling 45 minutes to an hour, 20 minutes on a bus or a minivan or a cab to go to school one way each day. They're gonna go five minutes, be in their community, and they still have that connection. Some of the kids that we have, like I said, the three that are coming in as eighth graders, all three of those kids that are outplacement are gonna go to LRB. LRB is not as expensive as the other out schools, other outplace schools that we use are therapeutic day schools, but it's, they're geared and they listen, I'm in direct contact with them on a daily, almost a daily basis with about some of the kids that are there. Some of the credit recovery that we do in Apex, those kids are doing Apex over there to get some of those, those classes made up. They have onsite social workers, and they're transporting kids back and forth. And it's just, it's allows them, if I want to try to bring them back, if we try, traditionally, when I bring a kid back from outplacement or a therapeutic day school, it wouldn't be an all or nothing. It would be a couple of classes at a time. I wouldn't wanna set them up for a complete life change and then it all falls apart, all the work they've done to try to earn their way back or, or their growth and have it fall apart. Usually gonna be a one or two class periods for about a quarter or semester and then build those on for another semester if they're being full-time. It's, it's allows us a lot more connection with those kids and they're, because they're ours. We want them to be connected to RB and, and be close and still be in the community. The, the question about LRB, I did provide a link in there, it's a great video that they have up to LANSI's website to kinda get a good idea about it. Ideally, I'd like to have you guys visit the school. It's really great what they've done in a year, but I haven't even visited yet because I'm not really in the mood of visiting places right now.
So this is like an alternate to RB? Like, this is an actual school?
It's an alternate high school setting for students. They, they are required, they have to have an IEP to attend that school. But yes.
At St. Louis?
Yes. Yep.
So right at LANSI, we worked together with LT, the superintendent, myself, and the director for LANSI to put together this program. And we've been working for two years to find a lease on a building in what's St. Louis. It was a central location.
I mean, and 20 years ago, they were asking, I was a freshman there, right? They were asking us for tons of money so they could build this community center and all these other things. It is a really, they got some really nice facilities there that are almost like brand new because there was such a low student population at St. Louis itself during these last 10, 15 years. So, I mean, some parts of that building are like in mint condition.
So what's our enrollment? We've got three for, we have three incoming freshmen and how many other people will we have? How many other students?
That are there now that were there? Ooh, it's a good question. Do you have the numbers later?
I think I counted 12 staff members when I looked at the video. I didn't watch the video. Who's good? If you have a chance, yeah, okay.
But students are coming from both LT and our school there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, it's a combined enrollment.
I guess maybe, rephrase.
Five.
So is there a cap to, to what we could?
No.
No, so if...
We pay per kid.
Okay.
So, so just so the board understands, like, one of the things about bringing a smaller school with 1,600 students, and we've obviously grown since I came in, but the school district was involved with LANSI long before then. And the reason we do that is so we don't necessarily have enough students in a particular programming area to where we would be able to support a full-time program at RB. But if you're part of a cooperative, this was us, China forces with LT. One of the issues with LANSI is it's predominant, with the exception of LT and RB, it's all K8. One of the issues with LANSI is it's predominant, with the exception of LT and RB, it's all K8 districts. And so this was a really big accomplishment over the last two years to get this up and running because otherwise the services we were receiving were from LANSI were professional development services for staffing, speech and language pathologists, school psychologists, OTPT. But there, you know, it wasn't as many options where some of our feeder schools share programs like this and they could send, you know, each of them donate a classroom or dedicate a classroom and then it's, you know, all the first through third grade students from LANSI that have this disability at one school. And we haven't really been able to perfect that with the high school and only having two, two schools. But so this is a big step forward with LRB.
Pretty exciting.
I touched on your last page, Kevin, your stuff you're prepping for, for 2122 and your first official year as director.
Yep, as we're doing right now, I think we're just working through this, the scheduling of the sectioning of current classes and then looking to, to like I mentioned before, fulfilling that program in life skills and vocational skills of bringing those, that, that work and that group together. Previously, Slink was talking about the EF team. If you, the team that, the DEXO's functioning team that we're really gonna embed next year is predominantly staff in the special education department that are passionate. When we brought that up to these, the team about bringing it back and, and wanting to get the training for the staff, they're super excited about pushing this out. It's gonna benefit the kids, it's gonna benefit the staff. Again, staff haven't been in a traditional school in a year and a half as well and giving them some of those strategies in, in our classes and some of the must haves to help classroom management as well as, as that, that learning in those classes. So we look forward to that, I would call it initiative, I call it refresher of implementing those new EF strategies into RB next year. We did, they did, the team did get PTO funding as well for some of the resources to help run the EF team that they're gonna use to supply materials and things for teachers and for the students next year as they come into the building.
Kevin, the blue, the blue page is just, we asked Kevin to kind of highlight the, the four things he's gonna focus on. So this just gives the board an idea, these are some things that Hector, myself and Chris and when we completed the interview process and met with Kevin and we offered Kevin the job, we wanted him to prioritize his work as a new director of special education for 2120, the 2122 school year. So this just provides you a snapshot of where he's gonna be focusing his efforts.
Yep, there's questions about it, I can answer them, but just things that I have, after doing the interim position this year and then actually filled in for a few weeks, about six weeks last, the previous school year, some, and feedback that I'm getting from my colleagues in the department about things that they like to see initiatives and think areas of which they want to grow. Really looking at, I think looking at the effectiveness of our co-teaching model here at RB and identifying what that looks like. Doing walkthroughs myself and surveys and talking to students and parents and staff, doing check-ins and continuing to do some professional development in contact with a, one of the experts in the area of co-teaching of possibly doing a training before we leave the school year. So like kind of the EF things, I want those things set before they leave and not try to give them something new or something that's kind of like put into their, their classes when they come back in office. It's, it's better to have something to work on with their co-teachers, for many of my staff that do co-teach, to work and plan those things over the course of the summer as opposed to trying to ask them to do these five co-teaching strategies that I want to see you guys all implement into your school day for the first semester. I think another thing, I have a lot of really talented and passionate people that I want to empower them to do some things here at RB that they've been maybe sitting on a little bit, that, you know, I think the EF was a big part of it. I have three or four staffers that, I'm already, they're already signing up for college courses and, and wanting to get, just planning these, the PD days for the EF stuff, but really looking at where your passions lie. Getting back to, to be the special educator and the case management and providing them with resources to be, so they can be the best they can at, at those responsibilities. Special ed is tied to the legal component of creating IEPs. It's evolving, every few months we have new things that come up that I need to keep them up to date with and some training and, and better practices and making that process more efficient for them. Because creating IEPs and doing IP meetings takes a long time to create and it is a legal document that we want to make sure is, is spot on with, again, providing those services because the funding a lot of times is allocated at an IP meeting when you put services in place on, on that document. So what are those needs? What are we gonna be able to do to meet those needs so that we can, again, be responsible with those services and not just create a document just to create a document, but really specifically connected to that individual student and what they need to be successful and access the curriculum here at RB, just like any gen ed student would. The last one is tied into the vocational training. We've started already identifying a few groups of seniors in our apartment that we want to. LANSI has a program that we use in our transition programs that, it's called virtual job shadowing software licenses and we have 11 of those that are still not being used. So we've identified 12 kids to start this virtual job shadowing option. And it's, it's goals lots of the trades, you do a lot of, it's like interest inventory, but there's a neat component to it where a student can actually get connections with postings of internships and jobs that are currently available in our community. And it's, it's, it's a, right on a link and they, they have resumes and submit information to, for those opportunities right there at, at that point. So we're gonna expand that to our next year's seniors and juniors and getting more licenses from LANSI to, to do that component. And Derek Herken, I know you talked to Mr. Delzadi and we've been talking about how can we bring in those trades component as well with the, with, with the school website and everything as well. So it's kind of, I want to make sure we do these things together at the same time because we have kids that definitely are not traditional students that love to go in the trade. It's just understanding how to, that, that access of how to get there.
Great job, Kevin. Is there any other questions for Kevin? Good job, Kevin, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, Kevin. And guys, I just wanted to mention really quick, you know, now you know why we made him our director. He knows students, he puts students first, uses the right words, it's an investment in our students. He knows program and what our kids need and more importantly, he has a vision for effectively using our resources. So I hope all the community knows, those are some of the reasons why we brought Kevin Ball to as our new director of special education. Nice job.
Thank you. Comprehensible.
Your colleagues stay to support you.
Yeah, they're handing you a water bottle. Teamwork makes the dream work.
Right here. Okay, so time for visitor statements. So I have two visitor statements I'd like to read, one, they said.
They were submitted, right?
They were submitted per the, per the guideline, so.
We also had a student video submitted as well, so we'll show that at the end. Or after you read these two statements.
RBHS board members, we were devastated to read the Riverside Brookfield landmark, parents, students, please keep orchestra teacher article dated March 2nd. We are in agreement with all reasons presented to the board on February 23rd and urge you to retain Matthew Loeb as a full-time music teacher slash instructor for the 2021, 2022 school year. Our daughter is an incoming freshman and was recently notified by Mr. Loeb. She was accepted into the Honors Chamber Orchestra Program. We were excited for her after reading Mr. Loeb's interview, responses posted on Instagram last fall. And speaking with other orchestra parents, Mr. Loeb was able to pivot the program in a unique way that kept his students engaged despite the pandemic. He introduced them to click track recordings which they used to rehearse. These tracks were then combined into a larger ensemble which allowed them to access and improve going forward, assess and improve going forward. This opportunity provided the students with a new skill set, audio recording technology. In closing, during these polarizing times, the thing we need more of is music and arts. Some benefits include boosting our children's brains, memory, creative and confidence, improving our children's academic achievement and social critical thinking skills, installing discipline into our children. As a result, we should continue making this investment instead of cutting it. Music and the arts are the magic ingredient that brings people together, which we desperately need in these trying times. We implore you to continue funding this wonderful program for our children. We need more teachers like Mr. Loeb to continue the power and importance of music education in our Riverside Brookfield High School community. David and Beth Strong. This other one was, it didn't, it didn't say in the title, but it was hand-delivered, so I felt, I felt, you know, I felt we should read it. You're gonna hand-deliver me a letter, I'm gonna read it, because that's, that's the right thing to do. RBHS budget cuts, Dr. Skinkis and member, Dr. Skinkis and members of the board. I live in the RBHS district and look forward to voting for school board members in April. I'm very concerned about the proposal to reduce funding for the music department. Cutting the orchestra teacher's position to halftime would jeopardize the future of RBHS students. I'm asking you to withdraw this proposal or vote no. Reducing funding for the orchestra teacher's position merely because enrollment is down due to the pandemic is short-sighted. The benefits of music education have been detailed by other district residents as have the financial costs of squandering a talented hire who is a good fit. So I'd like to point out only two additional considerations. First, many home buyers seek school districts with robust music programs. Weakening the music department would make the Riverside Brookfield District unattractive to many people looking to purchase a home in the suburbs. Do you want the RBHS district to lose tax revenue as property value drops because home shoppers seek out districts with better funded music programs? Second, parents of students who want to apply to competitive universities and colleges seek schools with good music education. In fact, as you probably know, participation in a strong music program with a wide variety of assembled, ensembles is a factor in being selected for a competitive university. Do you want RBHS students to be less competitive when they apply for selective colleges? I would make, it would make more sense to fully fund the music program in order to help RBHS develop and maintain a reputation as a school that turns out students who can be accepted into a highly selective schools. Also, I'd like to point out that while enrollment is down, Mr. Loeb can certainly spend any extra time cleaning out music files, taking care of other details that music teachers are forced to collect when enrollment is up and giving additional attention to students who need help. Less advanced students who receive additional instruction will carry the benefits with them for life. Advanced students may find themselves in a position to win competitions and bring honors to the school. The cost of maintaining Mr. Loeb's position through the pandemic downturn is minimal compared to the cost of RBHS developing a reputation as a district that provides poorly for students with big ambitions. We need long-term thinkers on our school board. Thank you in advance for careful consideration, for carefully considering these additional factors. Sincerely, Rebecca Richardson, school district resident, concerned voter.
And Mary Ann, you received a link. This is a video from our orchestra students.
I just want to say how Mr. Loeb is connected to each and every student in a special way. I respect that so much. Thank you.
I feel super lucky that I had the chance to be taught by Mr. Loeb.
He is such a wonderful and talented teacher and I hope we can make more memories together during my senior year, preferably in person.
Ever since I met Mr. Loeb, he's always had a positive attitude towards his job. He genuinely enjoys talking to his students every day and he wants nothing but the best for all of us. He's the friendliest guy I know and I really appreciate having him as a teacher.
As an entire orchestra, we would like to express our gratitude and love towards Mr. Loeb and his dedication and enthusiasm for both of the orchestras and the entire music department for the entire time he has been here, even through the COVID-19 virus and harder times as a teacher. And he's shown so much enthusiasm and dedication to everything that he has done, for every single class, concert, you name it. He's enthused, he's there. So I would really like to have him still as a full-time teacher to inspire other students like me. So thank you.
Mr. Loeb is a passionate teacher that made my transition to RB a really good one, even though it was virtual. That's why I think he should stay.
Consistency in the orchestra program is a really big deal. And I think consistency, especially with Mr. Loeb, is a big deal. Mr. Loeb, like, I don't know, I was kind of, kind of dying on my passion for cello a little bit. But Mr. Loeb would come in, he'd help me practice. I don't know, I came out of there thinking like, oh, you know, I kind of want to continue the cello. I might not have enrolled next year, but he's convinced me to keep it going. And I think that's awesome.
Mr. Loeb goes above and beyond to get to know every single one of his students. Even though he's only been my teacher for a few months, I felt absolutely confident to ask him for a letter of recommendation for a scholarship I was applying for. He wrote the letter, it was so perfectly written and I hope to win the scholarship. And if I do, it would really be because of him and all the time and effort he's put in to get to know me as a student, as a musician and as a person.
Over my four years here at RB, I've never had an orchestra director put so much effort into making sure that we're not just chamber orchestra, not just string orchestra, but one combined orchestra department. Considering we are virtual, this is the most unified I feel the two orchestras have been in my four years here. And Mr. Loeb has always pushed for new ideas, new activities to bring us together and I think that's really important for an orchestra director to have.
My experience with Mr. Loeb has been very positive. I feel like he is one of the best orchestral teachers I've had. He is supportive and kind and very motivating for us to keep improving at our instruments. I know that when I was pressing my ensemble, he was very kind and supportive and always gave good and thoughtful critiques to help us improve our piece. And yeah.
I think Mr. Loeb does a truly phenomenal job creating enthusiasm, confidence and even community with our orchestra. He always makes sure each student's needs met and he genuinely cares for us and is always excited for each new day in orchestra and I really appreciate that.
I wasn't expecting much from my virtual orchestra, but I turned out to be wrong. It is the most engaging and enjoyable class I've ever had and it's all due to Mr. Loeb. He has had such a big impact on my music abilities and is truly vital to the music department. Perhaps middle school orchestra numbers have gone down due to them not having fun in their virtual classes. But here at RB, orchestra is completely different. If middle schoolers see how much excitement Mr. Loeb brings, I believe the numbers will go up. Dressing measures can't be based on one unprecedented year.
Thank you, students did a nice job on that.
I just want to say how Mr. Loeb is connected to each and every student in a special way.
There you go.
All right.
X mirror, not the, probably just hit the X and still doesn't.
Visitor statements for additional discussion items. At this point, the meeting board of education members made a request to add an additional discussion item. Reports, for example, here for, we don't have one, student advisor's report.
Michael, Lily, anything specific?
Nothing specific.
I have a question for you guys.
Bring it.
Four, two, four, two, four.
I'm doing four days.
Four.
Four, four?
Yeah.
Good, honey.
I'm gonna be out of town for like two weeks, but then I'm doing four.
I mean, if there's any updates, I mean, everything I think has been consistently well. I think having, and I have been saying this to all my teachers, being able to go to school is just completely different than me at home because, like I said, like I'm much more motivated when I'm in person. I, I, like, sometimes it's just hard to get out of bed when I'm at home, but knowing that I'm have to get to school on time, having a routine, that's what makes the difference. And I think that also makes me more engaged in my learning. It's just, I think that having this four day is really important, especially if we're trying to make up gaps. I think this is gonna be a big deal. I think this is gonna be a big deal and a great transition for the future.
Yeah, all of my senior friends who are going four days, I've been talking to them, and they think it's really important to set up that schedule again, since we're gonna be going off to college soon, and to get back in that mindset, since it's gonna be a really tough transition from being online to going to college, which is gonna be just a whole nother level of, you know, challenge. So I think it's really important for not just us seniors, but everyone at the school to kind of return back to a sense of normalcy in their school schedule.
Yeah, and especially with, like, my younger brother. Like, forcing some students that aren't as motivated at home, making them go to school is really going to maybe make their grades better or any, anything improvement-wise. I think this is just really gonna help. I'm a full supporter of it, and I'm really happy that we can do this now.
Thank you, Lily, thank you, Michael.
My superintendent's report.
Curriculum Advisory Council, no update. Spring meeting will be scheduled to discuss new course proposals and Kylie's foreign language program. And Hoshi's plan to address the board's request to begin to offer some other languages. Facilities Advisory Council, no update. Spring meeting will be scheduled to discuss summer work and annual facility rental agreement review. That usually will take place in May. Finance Advisory Council, no update. Our next meeting will be in May to begin to review the tentative budget. Personnel Advisory Council met this past week to review the staffing report. We also went through our comparison with enrollment projections and how we've done with staffing. So the board saw that thorough report tonight. Policy Advisory Council, Dr. Smetano, Mike Connors, and Legal Counsel are working on the Student Online Personal Protection Act, the SOPA, which takes place, I believe, June 1st, or July 1st.
July 1st.
July 1st. So basically, that's an online, we have to have protections in place for all the different companies we have online services with, Skyward, any kind of apps that we're using that have collected student information. So this is a new law that's been put in place, and we're working closely with Legal Counsel to address that. And finally, purchase, sale, or lease of land Advisory Council. You see, there's an article posted today in The Landmark. So our, I would say, they didn't break down. I just think it's at this point, we're at a stalemate where the zoo kind of indicated that they're done discussing this. For the board members, back in July, we were ready to bring the CEO of the zoo, Dr. Straw, to the Board of Education meeting to memorialize an agreement we had reached over the summer, where we would address, the school would have addressed both parking and the south entrance, adding an additional lane at the expense of the school. In return, the school would have had sole access to the field, so that we would, you know, fixing the zoo's problem of not having any paved parking spaces and also addressing the school's need of not having to get out of bus to go to different parks to play a lot of our spring sports. At the last minute, the Forest Reserve was concerned with the number of burrows that were gonna be impacted by the agreement the zoo and the high school had reached. So they had to go back to the table, and we came up with a couple ideas that gained the support of both the commissioners, Commissioner Silvestri, Commissioner Aguilar, Director Randall from the Forest Reserve were on board with the latest proposal. But it was, you know, approximately a 200-space reduction for the zoo of parking spaces. Now, granted, the number of spaces that they tally as being dedicated parking spaces are on the grass field and in the gravel lot behind the grass field. So there are no paved lines, there are no, you know, lane markings or anything to identify if that's an accurate number or not. I'm assuming that's a number they, they fill when they're at max capacity. The benefit would have been the having 618 paved spots in the additional queuing lane. And so we were willing to reduce the field size, so there would have been just one universal baseball and softball field and conserve as an auxiliary athletic field in the winter, or at its fall. But at this time, the zoo felt that unless they can get to 800 spaces, 851 to be exact, that it was not in their best interest to continue these discussions. So definitely a little setback. We've spent probably the last four or five years since the board approved that money. So we, we have a couple things to do. I'll be pulling together the purchase and Advisory Council, which is Ms. Alas and Mr. Durkin, a meeting myself and Mr. Alcandro from Westbrook Consulting, just to kind of see what our next steps are. You know, if we fail to reach an agreement with the zoo, the other, eventually by next year, the board is gonna need to decide, you know, what, and what actions they'll want to take, you know, with that dedicated money. As if we were unable to reach it with the zoo, I think, you know, there was specifically discussed at that time with the Board of Education that if we're not able to reach that and there is not an emergency, like a pension cost shift, it would not be applied to just general operating expenses. And so that's something the board has to, you know, see if there's additional, are there other projects that we could pick up? Or is there a way that we can maybe address these needs with another municipality, somewhere close? I don't, I don't know. We have to kind of lay all that out. That's kind of where we're at right now. Even though the zoo feels they're, they're at a point where their discussions have reached the kind of the end or a stalemate. You know, I wouldn't say stalemate, because it's not necessarily bargaining. I mean, it's, it's their property, and so we're trying to create the, you know, every solution that they were asking us to accommodate, we were trying to accommodate while still meeting the needs of the Forest Reserve and the zoo. So we'll have to revisit this again and see if there's another angle to pursue. So a little frustrating, but, you know, that's part of negotiating, and that's kind of the position the high school's in. We don't, our, you know, land access and ability to have land and do some of these programs as our school grows and our programs continue to grow and kids flourish, we're gonna have to find another, possibly another venue for that.
That money is life safety. It's not Ed Fund money.
No, no.
That money was, was.
Three million dollars is a working cash bond. The discussion that occurred in September of 2017 when they approved it, the board was very adamant that, and there was a lot of talk at that time about a pension cost shift. And so what they were concerned about is just passing a general working cash bond and just having it sit in the working cash and use it for deficit spending or general operation, operational expenses. So, I mean, in particular, Mr. Smithy, Dr. Keen.
We're pretty adamant about it. If we don't use it, we'll give it back to the taxpayers. It's the taxpayer money we borrowed in direct correlation for this project.
Right. So if it doesn't get used, it does not, will, will not be used for student programs or salaries and benefits?
No, you would just pay back the bonds.
Pay back the bond and be done with it.
Earlier. That's, I think, how, what we talked about.
Pay off the, yeah.
The consultant told us at the time.
Okay. It's been so. I mean, if I was there, it's just been so long, I didn't remember that part. And wanted to clarify.
I mean, we're not, it's not, I mean, I know the zoo's saying.
No, right.
200 spots. It's a good spot to be in, I think, that's really, you know, we know the answer.
I definitely want to move forward. That's not what I'm saying, right?
It may be helpful, can we, or can you circulate the ordinance that, that was approved about the, the bond usage?
Yes, I could. It's in the resolution from October of 2017.
I, I think that might be helpful to have kind of at our fingertips, because if it's, yes, for parking improvements, but also deficit spending, let's, let's actually kind of refresh and see what that language is. Just keep it in front of mind.
Mary Ann can put, and I could send that out this Friday. That's all I have for Superintendent Report.
All right, now we got the fun stuff. This is Superintendent Kristen's report.
Well, I certainly think it's fun. I might be the only one, but. Good evening. Tonight, I will report out on the financial information for February. That represents approximately 67% of our fiscal year. As always, I'll begin on a monthly summary report, which is Board Book Page 80. Total operating revenue for the month was $2,278,546, with 81% coming from property tax, 12% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding. This month, we received some of our typical state funding, as well as some from the previous year, and then 5% coming from federal and state reimbursement. So the reason we got so much money in property tax collection is that's the first round that we've received from the spring assessment. Came a little earlier than it has in, in past years. Usually, it hits the first week in March. From the fall collection, just for an FYI for the board, we received 96.2% of what we levied for. So we were actually, once all that money trickled in, we were pretty close to what we budgeted for, for, for that collection. So we'll, we'll hope that the same thing happens in the spring. We just need to be, we just need to monitor that because there is a chance that with the fiscal year ending, some of that may hit the following fiscal year. The total operating expenditures for the month were $1,938,235, with 79% towards salary and benefits, 9% for special education tuition, and then 6% for operations and maintenance. On the next page begins a financial statement. The fund balance summary shows that the district is still deficit spending in its operating funds. You can see all the way to the right, revenues less expenditures. It's negative $1,911,455. This deficit will slowly decrease as we collect more revenue through property tax. We'll have a better assessment probably at the April meeting as to where we, you know, we'll finish the fiscal year. We'll have a much better approximation. On the next page, the summary of revenue shows that the district has received 60% of our budgeted revenue for the year. The dollar amount is similar to where we were at this time last year, but the percentage, you can see, is a little different. On the next page, the summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 63% of the budgeted expenditures for this year, and this amount is down from this time last fiscal year. We were at 68%. Keep in mind, a lot of the athletic stipends have shifted to different seasons, as well as a lot of the athletic expenses have shifted to different seasons as well. And then, as always, I've provided two additional reports for the board's information. One is a statement of revenue and expenditures for the month of February. It also compares budget to actual, so you can see how different accounts are tracking. And then the student activity account summary for the month of February as well. And that concludes my report for tonight.
No questions were submitted.
Correct.
Thank you, Kristen.
We already did the principal's report.
Hector, you had a few other bullets?
I do, I do. All right, guys, I'm back. Remember the last board meeting? I said Tuesday was one of my favorite days because I get to be here with the board, with my students, with my boss. But more importantly, I get to talk about my teachers as well. Last week, during our Tech Two Tuesday, key part of our professional development programming, our staff members showcased a wide variety of tools to enhance students' digital skills. So, you know, a big shout-out to Kylie Link with my assistant principal, Ms. Sarkady for showing class craft, Ms. Kayla for showing digital notebooks, Ms. Chanka for going over Google Sites and group work, Ms. Sterling for CSO, Ms. Wendy Casson for using Google Classroom, and for Mr. James Baum for using self-assessment with Google. These are all programs that students know how to use, and their skills have been enhanced for it. This Tuesday, you know, just a few hours ago, our teachers shared two teaching strategies that are powerful. The first one is an individual playlist. So what's, what's an individual playlist? It's a menu of learning experiences. So for example, in biology, the culminating project for Unit Two of Cells and Homeostasis was Cells Organel Analogy Project. But students took different routes to get to that project. Some students did a cells reading and Venn diagram. Others did a cell rep and poem and song. Others did an animal and plant cell labeling. So students had different routes to get to that concluding project, and that's special, and that is an excellent teaching strategy. Another example that we shared was station rotations. How station rotations work, and I'll give an English example. So you can have a, a conference station, you could have a reading station, you could have a group station, and students rotate. They're practicing on the same skill, but they can go to different stations wherein they would feel comfortable. So these are two strategies that were powerful that we shared today just a few hours ago.
I love that.
So I want everybody to know that our students are getting the best education possible, with the best skills to be successful here and wants to graduate RB.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Freitas.
Really, shout-out to all my teachers. Hey, we're in Women's History Month. Please stop by the main office, okay? The main office has the picture of almost all of our female staff members. And so some chose not to have the picture of that, which I respect. It's no big deal, you know? But you guys got to see it. It is a beautiful recognition of all of our female coworkers. So guys, please stop by. Any parents, any students, if you're ever in the building, go by the main office to see all the females that work here at RB. Really special, and I'm glad to work with so many of them as well. Guys, earlier, you saw our Student Services page. Remember, you're only three clicks away from accessing our union programs, right? First click, Student Services. Second one, College Career Counseling. And the third one, Union Trade. Please make sure you visit it and familiar yourself with it. The next Talking with the Principal will be held on March 19th from 19:10 a.m. via Zoom. This one is for the parents. I do office hours with the students, okay? So Talking with the Principals for Parents, Office Hours with the Principal, that's for students during a school day. There will be no final exams for second semester, so we could remain consistent with first semester. We already spoke about testing, but again, we'll be testing in the month of April. So please, parents, please look out for correspondence either from me or Mr. Mark Helgeson, our testing coordinator. And that concludes my principal's report.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
All right. That's agenda, Google hide them. I'm there.
Yeah, here we go. Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on February 9th and 23rd, 2021, opened and closed. Student handbook, registration fees for 2021-2022 school year, copier contract, lease agreement for services and equipment as presented in the March 9th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. I need a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Alas.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Ms. Jacob?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Alas?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Smithy?
Yes. All right, Student Handbook.
Oh, business, right? We just did all that in the conversation.
That's all part of the consent.
All business, action on life safety.
No updates at this time?
TRS Supplement Savings.
Kristen's still working with the legal department and TRS on some of the changes.
All right, new business, payment of bills.
Payment of bills, here we go. The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the March 9th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second, Ms. Sierra.
Okay, roll call, right?
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Alas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Fresco?
Yes.
Ms. Smithy?
Yes. Textbook?
Textbook adoptions, next.
Was this a first read, or?
I thought it was, yeah, why?
I thought it was the first.
I think it's just the first read. We moved Kylie up to do the presentation.
Okay.
So if there's no, take some time to reduce, review some additional information. And if not, we could put it on the April Consent Agenda.
Okay.
I'll give her opportunity to see if any of the numbers change as well.
Okay, Staffing Summary Minimum Course Enrollment Approval.
That's definitely up for tonight, right?
Yes, that's just those three classes.
Sure. The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves, in accordance with District Policy 6:31, minimum course enrollment, the list of courses for the 2021-2022 school year with projected enrollment below 20 students based on the current student enrollment data as presented in the March 9th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second, Ms. Sierra.
Is it all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Glad to have it. Our manager clothes, personnel, sale, lease, property pending in a litigation, collective negotiations in school safety. It's another.
It's another opportunity for visitor statements. Discussion items, any requested? I believe so. Consideration items for future meetings.
Those are placeholders.
Student advisor in the holidays, those are placeholders. And closed session.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. All in one breath. Second.
The second I have, second by Ms. Sierra, is the roll call, go.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Zales?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Fescough?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes. Yes.
9:22.
Hi, Leonard Burke.